What did you say for resolution? Say. Oh, it's supposed to say we should be saying that.
Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 6:00 P.M. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance and if you would remain standing for the invocation from Reverend Beryl Keeney from Lighthouse Baptist Church. Appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to preface my prayer with a quote from a newsletter I get. A wise warrior once said, "Your focus determines your reality." He goes on to add, okay, that was Qui Gon Jin in Star Wars The Phantom Menace, and he was killed shortly after he said that. But that doesn't mean he's wrong. And so I want to focus my thoughts tonight on thankfulness as I pray. And please join me as we lift up ourselves to the Lord. God, I thank you and am thankful for these public servants, those who take their time to serve you and to serve our community. God, I'm thankful. God, I'm thankful as well. This being the month where we honor our veterans, and I'm thankful, God, for our military and for those that have served and just the value that they add to our community. Father, I'm thankful as well for this community and just the good things that are going on. And God, I recognize it's easy to grouse about the ones that got away and the opportunities that got away, but God, I'm thankful for the blessings that we have within this community. I just love this community and what a blessing it is to actually live here in the city of Bellevue and to be a part of it over almost 20 years now. So God, I ask for wisdom. You tell us when we ask for wisdom, asking faith, that you would give generously, Lord, ask wisdom on behalf of the council meeting tonight and the council members and those presenting, that you give them wisdom and insight and discernment of what is best, best for our city, best for our people. And so we ask for that in Jesus' dear name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Keeney. Okay, meeting is called to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. A copy of this meeting is in conduct in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Are there any council members that would like to remove an item? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove 16B, C, D, E, F, G, put it on regular agenda.
Any others? Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with the changes just mentioned.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister for the amended consent agenda, removing item 16B, C, D, E, F, and G. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item number seven, special presentation, seven A, discussion of refunding of bonds, ordinance 3982, item 13B, an ordinance 3983, item 13C. So Cody here.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members. Usually Rich kind of leads me off here and steals all the thunder, but I guess I get to go first here. You've got a number of issues in front of us, or I should say the opportunities exist in front of you tonight with the recently annexed SIDs along with some of your additional general obligation bonds, as well as a separate one that I mentioned last time, if you recall, the other one being the Bellevue Municipal Building Corp.'s taxable bonds that were issued for the construction of the convention center. Those bonds were originally issued in 2000. I'll start with those. Let me say, well, those bonds were originally issued in 2016, and those were taxable in nature due to the type of activity that would be utilized in that facility, being the fact that there would be private activity use. You could not utilize tax exempt bonds issued for construction of that project. So those were taxable in nature. Those had a pretty significant interest rate attached to them just because of the market at the time. What currently remains on those bonds is approximately $6,850,000, and the average interest rate is at a 5.28%. Interest rates have come down significantly since 2016, and the spreads between the taxable and tax exempt market have compressed as such that taxable rates are not much higher than tax exempt rates in our current environment. So you have the opportunity to refinance those convention center bonds from a 5.28 to what we're projecting around a 2.96%. We're looking at savings over $750,000 in present value to the city. So that's a pretty straightforward deal, taking current rates or the current existing rates that you have on those in the taxable in nature, swapping them out with lower taxable rates and achieving significant interest cost savings. The other one that's slightly more complex, if you recall, the last time I was here, we looked at refinancing two different sets of general obligation bonds. There was your 2013 As and your 2013 Bs. Those looked great at the time, but we kind of, we were forecasting that the market would at least stay flat and possibly improve. So we showed a little patience. We did not go to market with those. Instead, we waited for the SIDs transactions that have happened, the annexations, because all of those bonds are general obligation nature as well. So they're similar credits, or they're the same credit, and therefore we can combine them all into one issue, which creates much more efficiencies when you're going to market. You have a bigger volume issue. You're going to attract more interest, larger participants, just a bigger audience, I should say, when they're bidding on your bonds. So you have a number of those SIDs that are currently callable, meaning they were issued five years or more previously, that you can refinance right now with general obligation tax exempt bonds. So we're proposing to lump those in with the series 2013 bonds into one issue. And then all of the other remaining SIDs that you annexed that had previous bonds outstanding inside of five years, those are not quite callable. But again, back to the taxable market is low to the point where you can advance refund those with taxable bonds, restructure the debt, combine them into one large issue, restructure that debt to make your levy, your total bond levy, nice and smooth, level aggregate, and that also generates positive present value savings in both transactions. So on the tax exempt, digging my numbers here, on the tax exempt piece, we're looking at present, I'm sorry, net present value savings in excess of, I believe it was, I want to misspeak here, $250,000. And then on the taxable advance refunding of the non-callable, or I should say not currently callable, SIDs, you're looking at present value savings in excess of $450,000. So kind of big picture, what the total financing package that we have in front of you today, it's a couple of different ordinances because there's two different credits, but you're looking in excess of around one and a half million dollars of interest cost savings, packaging these all into three separate bond issues and kind of cleaning up and making a nice, smooth, level aggregate bond levy for the taxpayers.
Thank you, Cody. Rich, do you want to add anything?
We do think we're going to get S and P to apply the double A plus to all of these issues.
Yeah, that's correct. We already had the conversation with Standard Poor's. We, Rich and Jim and Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we had our ratings call a few weeks ago for the general obligation bonds themselves. I went back to them, let them know these other opportunities have come to fruition and they make sense, and if they would indeed apply that double A plus rating to each series of bonds that we're looking to market, and they're doing so. Now granted, you are paying for that rating to be attached to the bonds, but it's well worth it. In the case of Bellevue, the double A plus, it's the second step down. There's only one higher than you guys out there in the world, and that's a triple A bond rating. We're also going to be following the market on the heels of Sarpy County just pricing bonds. They are indeed a triple A, but I've looked at what we're projecting in rates and what they obtain, and I think we're going to be right in the market, and I think it'll be well received.
And I'd just like to say, I know there was some concern and some consternation on all the debt that we were acquiring with some of these annexations. This is, we looked at it as an opportunity to take some of that higher priced debt because a Sid certainly doesn't have the double A plus rating and the ability to get those low interest rates that we have. And I think, like Cody said, we're somewhere around, you know, 700,000 of economic benefit from this deal, plus we have the chance to reschedule it to make it fit into our levy so that our bond side levy will not have to go up, and we'll see if that over time maybe can be worked down a little bit to free up some funds for the rest of the city to do some great things.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Rich and Cody, for all your work in that. I know that's a lot of numbers and a lot of work. Does the council have any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cody and Rich. The timing you did very well. I think the interest rates were lowered at least twice, and I think three times in the past year.
Thank you very much.
Probably not going to see anything lower for a while. So we've got the triple A bond rating. We've got timing on our side. We're not going to get much lower, but you waited. You didn't do it when it dropped once. You didn't do it when it dropped twice. So I'm just recognizing and appreciating, once again, we have good financial oversight in the city, and I like your numbers, a million and a half that we can save over this. We've consolidated, and I think it's looking very good. I think what you're looking at is all of these varied interest rates and in bundling those, maybe some of them, because I noticed some of them have 1.9% interest, 2% interest. I'm assuming some you have to bundle just because they're a small amount and you got to clean them up, and that interest may go up a little. But I'm assuming some of the lowest interest rates or some of the larger amounts, we may not actually refinance. But I'd just like your thoughts on that because some of those stood out to me.
No, you're exactly correct. We put a great deal of analysis into this. You're fortunate to have a finance director that's very proficient in Microsoft Excel because he's, between him and I, we're going over a lot of data. But you're exactly right. There are some of the SIDs, you know, you all have seen how these bonds are structured. We're looking at not going out further than 2035. So, you know, you're looking at a series of 15, to break it down in simplest form, you're looking at a series of 15 smaller loans where these bonds are structured. On the lower end, on the taxable ones, on the taxable advance refundings, we're looking at around a 2.1, 2.128 to be exact, as of today's numbers. And on the long end, that's where most of the tax exempt will be positioned, 3% coupons to yield a 2.3%. So to your point, Mr. Preister, you do have some bonds on these SIDs that are at a 1.9 or at a 1.85%. To swap those out with higher interest rates doesn't make economic sense. So we are handpicking. We have the ability to pick and choose and do any or all. What you have in front of you tonight is to approve all of them, but we're going to go through with a fine tooth comb and take out those ones that don't produce present value savings. Now, there may be one or two that there are a little bit that, you know, taking them out is going to have a different economic benefit, and that is the restructuring to keep that levy level. But we're going to try and maximize the savings by leaving some of these bonds outstanding, perhaps looking at paying down some of these at the time of closing, or just leaving them until they reach their call date. Some of these are going to be callable next year, 2020, 2021, and 2022, by leaving them outstanding. When we come back and refinance, hopefully if rates remain low, some of your other debt, we can package those with some of your other GO bonds. So this just authorizes all of the bonds that have been annexed and other candidates that we see bring value to the city to refinance now. The maturities within those bonds that don't produce present value savings, we will kick out and come up with the best possible package to maximize your savings.
Good answer, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Cody or Rich? All right, thank you, Cody.
Okay, thank you much.
Item number eight, organizational matters. There are none. Item nine, approved citizen communication. There is no request. Item 10, liquor licenses, none. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, none. Moves us to 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. There are several ordinances for second reading tonight. Comments will be limited to those items specifically listed on the agenda, and each person will be allowed five minutes to speak. If there are groups of individuals wishing to speak, it would be best to send one representative to speak on behalf of the group. So item 12A, ordinance number 3976, request to annex Lot 37 Orchard Valley. Susan, could you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Lot 37 Orchard Valley to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? I will open up the public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against the annexation of Orchard, Lot 37 Orchard Valley? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. The third reading and vote will occur November 19th, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. here at the council chambers. Item 12B, ordinance number 3977, an ordinance to amend section 2-28 of Bellevue City Code pertaining to executive sessions. Susan, could you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend section 2-28 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to executive sessions of the city council to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
I'm going to open the public hearing for ordinance number 3977, but first I want to have Bree speak regarding the ordinance, and then we'll get back to the open public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming. We've had a lot of feedback through email, letters, social media, and a very good turnout tonight. So we want to thank everybody for coming and voicing your opinions and concerns and input on this ordinance. I'm going to kind of address ordinance 3977 and 3978 together because there's been some overlap, and they've been kind of lumped into one. So I'm just going to address both of them at this time, and then we can answer any questions when public hearing opens up. So there's an ordinance 3977, and it's pertaining to closed session. Currently, Nebraska law, statute 84-1410, provides that public bodies can go into closed session. It's something that's routinely used in city councils, it's routinely used, sorry, in other public body settings. The rules for closed session are all outlined in statute 84-1410. It talks about what you can and cannot discuss in closed session, and there's a lot of case law that discusses topics for consideration in closed session. At any point in closed session, if you go above and beyond what the motion was for going into closed session, so that topic of consideration, any council member can and should stop the conversation, and it will then go back out of closed session. That's important to remember because when you go into closed session, a public body is not talking about things outside of what that topic was to go into closed session. Additionally, there has to be a vote from city council to even go into closed session. So if city council does not vote to go into closed session, then we would not go into closed session on that matter. Additionally, it's important to remember that when you're in closed session, and this is state law, and this is something that we practice and follow continually, when you're in closed session, you cannot take a vote. So there's no votes occurring in closed session, and there are no conversations about how votes are going to take place in closed session. There's no polls trying to figure out who's going to vote which way. So if it's an action item, if it's an item on the agenda that warrants a vote, like a purchase agreement or something like that, when we come out of closed session, then the motions and the votes would occur outside of closed session. If it's an action item that's on the agenda for a vote, any council member can discuss what occurred in closed session. They can talk about those conversations. They can disclose what was done if it's an action item. If it's not an action item, and it's like a personnel matter or a real estate negotiation that's not up for a vote, those are meant to be confidential, and that's provided for in statute. It's also currently provided for in our city code 2-28. Our city code already says that this information should be confidential, and it can only be disclosed upon a vote of the city council. We didn't change that. It's already confidential information. The issue is, is what happens if somebody breaks that? What happens if somebody breaks a rule? If there's no set consequence, then people can break rules, and that's just how it's going to happen. So we already had the confidentiality. What this ordinance does, 3977, is say that if you breach that confidentiality, it could be something that's considered as misconduct under the other ordinance. That's the only thing we did. We have not changed the reasoning for that ordinance. It's already confidential. Additionally, there's been some concerns that what happens if laws are being broken or what happens if there's whistleblowing? Is somebody going to be punished for that? There are already separate laws that account for that. If there's any criminal act that's happening in a closed session, or if there's somebody that comes out and does, let's say whistleblowing, or files a complaint because something unethical was happening inside closed session, or they talked about a subject different than what you went into closed session, there's already laws that account for that. People would be able to do that. Any city council member would be able to do that, and there would be no sanction for that because it's already accounted for in law. So we're not breaching any of those rights afforded to any member on this council. Going into the other misconduct ordinance, 3978, there have been some comments that we've heard that this ordinance is illegal, that it's taking away the rights of the voters, and so I wanted to address some of those concerns. And I want to assure you that we have done our due diligence in looking at the law, looking at city code, looking at other cities, to try to create the best form of this ordinance. And we are taking into consideration everything that everybody says, and we will continue to do that tonight as well. The state law that allows the city council to pass this ordinance is 16-217. So Nebraska revised statute has already been passed by the Nebraska Legislature. It's 16-217. The first sentence of that ordinance specifically states, and I'm going to quote, "A city of the first class, by ordinance, may provide for the removal of elective officials of the city for misconduct." It then goes on in that ordinance to provide for filling a vacancy if there is a removal from office. And it says that you fill that vacancy pursuant to 32-568. When I was asked to look at this ordinance by administration and by a fellow city council member, the first thing I did was I went to the law. Is it something we can even do? If it's not something we can do, then my response would have been, there's nothing in the law that supports this. We can't do anything. But you have a state statute that specifically says that you can do it. And in fact, Fremont and Grand Island have both already passed ordinances that are currently on their books that provide for this exact measure. The only thing that we're doing different is we're requiring a unanimous vote instead of a three-fourths vote, and we are actually outlining what misconduct means so that it's not this vague, open-ended understanding of what misconduct is. That's the only thing we've changed. You already have two other cities of the first class that have this ordinance pursuant to Nebraska law. I personally spoke with Frank Daley from the Accountability and Disclosure Commission, and we reviewed statute 16-217 together. He pulled it up on his computer, and we had a really in-depth conversation about it, and he agreed that the statute would provide any city of the first class with the ability to remove someone from office as for misconduct is outlined in the statute. I do believe that what we are doing and what we have presented is in compliance with all Nebraska law, and other cities are doing it as well. There is a section in the proposed ordinance that would allow for a hearing of misconduct, so the actual hearing to go into closed session. I am suggesting tonight that if the council approves the ordinance on third reading, that it be amended to remove that provision. That provision was originally put in place, I received feedback, prior to having the progressive sanctions, I received feedback that there may be public embarrassment and unnecessary public embarrassment for complaints that maybe don't, maybe minor complaints that could be handled in a different matter. So once we had the feedback and added in the progressive sanctions, I don't think that there would be a need for closed session anymore. So my recommendation would be to remove that language so that if there is a hearing on misconduct, that it would happen in an open public forum. If it's not removed, and there was a closed session, again, no action would be taken inside closed session. So if there was a vote to go in closed session for a hearing, any action and vote on the item would happen outside of closed session in a public setting. Finally, and I'll stop talking so you guys can come up and talk. Finally, as written and as would be implemented if the city council passes this, the mayor, city administrator, and city attorney would have no power or authority to remove any official from office. The city administrator's role is specifically outlined in the proposed ordinance and policy resolution. It amounts to receiving and processing the complaints and setting the matters for hearing before the city council. That's it. The city administrator has no other authority. The city administrator is not voting. The city administrator is not removing anybody from office. He processes the complaints, puts it before the city council, and then the city council would make any decision after hearing if there is a sanction that is warranted. Additionally, the vote is set up to allow for a unanimous vote of all remaining council members. So if there's a council member at the hearing, it would take five votes to pass if there was any kind of sanction, whether that's a written reprimand, whether that's a public, whether that's a removal from office. The mayor would not vote, and the mayor would not be a tiebreaker vote in this situation. He has no power in removing an elected official is drafted. And under 16-217, we have the ability to craft this ordinance to provide for the removal, and we've done it in a way to where the mayor's not removing anybody, city administrator's not removing anybody. The only role that I would play in any of this would be asking questions at the hearing, similar to a trial, so that you get all of the evidence and everybody has the opportunity to present their side of the story, and that would be my only role. Nobody in the administration is removing or would remove or could remove anybody from city office. So it would be up to the city council after hearing to make any decision. That is all I have, and I'll answer any questions when you come up as well.
Thank you, Bree. That was very thorough. Great recap. So we are on 12B, ordinance number 3977, and I did open the public hearing. So if there's anyone that would like to speak on ordinance number 3977, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Since we've addressed both, can we let the public just address both as one public hearing, please?
Yep, I'll reword that to open the public hearing for ordinance number 3977 and 3978 at the same time.
That way, there's no confusion. Thank you. That way, there's no confusion. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Centineo. I am here to speak on both issues. I hope you all receive, I think you all received my email that I sent earlier, I think mid-October. Unfortunately, I didn't get any replies from any council members or from the mayor. I did get, later, I got a reply from Mr. Shannon. I did get a reply from Ms. Robbins. We had a back-and-forth about what this ordinance would look like. As background, I'm also an attorney. I'm also a duly-elected official here in Bellevue. I'm also a business owner. I'm a nurse, and I am on many boards, public boards. So I say that not to convince you of how smart I am or qualified, but that I do have a very well-grounded understanding of the closed session, how closed session works, and I have a great belief in volunteering and giving back to my community. I have to, the things that I'd like to comment on today, the idea that the people who would, if this were to go forward, the people who would be accusing, a city council member or mayor, if that were to be, would be sitting as jurors to decide on guilt or innocence. To have your accuser decide your guilt or innocence is contrary to how the democratic works, process works, and contrary to how trial works. In a trial, and I know this because I do trial work, we have an independent arbiter, a judge or a jury. That is not how this is set up. It is fundamentally unfair to that person who would be accused because there's no independent investigation. The city administrator is a wonderful man. I have nothing personal. I have only good things to say about him, but he is not, he is not without, his boss is the mayor, so he is not without some kind of loyalties. And again, that's not a personal, at all, a personal attack on Mr. Risto, but that is just a fact. This would never pass scrutiny in the real world of trial work. My other, some of my other issues are there's no, I haven't had the opportunity to read the most recently amended, which were just posted yesterday. There were some additional things posted, but there's no real outline for the proceedings and what the timeline would be, what the time limit would be between what's in closed session, what the accused person, if they said something outside of closed session, and then if it were to go to public hearing. So there's no real, we have to wait this long, or it could be forever. And who is it that you're not allowed to talk to? Your spouse, other chamber, other city council members? It's very, very vague. And where vagueness lives, lawsuits breathe. This really sets up the city of Bellevue, in my opinion, to a lot of possibility to be sued by whoever that accused person is, because they won't be getting their due diligence, they won't be getting their opportunity to present their case. And who pays for that person's attorney? Are they allowed to be represented by their own attorney? Do they have to pay for that attorney? Is the city going to pay for that attorney? Ms. Robbins would not be unfair arbiter of the information, because she, by position and by who she is paid for, would therefore have a conflict of interest in preventing all of the facts. It's just, it would be impossible, and if I were accused by someone who was paid by the people who are accusing me, that wouldn't be fair trial process. So there's just so many issues with this ordinance and the way that it was written and the way it would possibly be carried out. I also asked for any examples of how this actually worked in practice, right? So we know Grand Island and Fremont have these ordinances that are similar. Have they gone through the process? What did it look like? And I have not received any answers to those questions either. So those are things that I think that there's just a lot more investigation that I would like this council to do. I would like to see that we are better protecting our citizens and our coffers from potential lawsuits. And I'm not saying that there shouldn't be some kind of way to manage information, but I don't think that this is the right approach. And that, in addition, and I'll, the perception that people have of the city council and city administration, their perception is reality. This year hasn't been, has been, there have been some stains on what the process has ever gone by with the city's council, and I would hate to say, see this as a self-inflicted wound from the city council. So with that, I take my leave, and I appreciate your time. Yes, Mr. Shannon?
Being an attorney, I'll ask you a little more technical question, all right?
I will do my best, but this is not legal advice.
Got it. Fair enough. All right. So the Nebraska State Constitution, Section 1-6, talks about trials, and in a civil trial requires conviction by a five-sixth majority. Therefore, the two cities that we're modeling our ordinances after are in violation of the state constitution because they only require 75% to convict, and five-sixths is 83.3%. So...
And that's why I asked the question about how have we seen this process play out? Because I think that there would be a legal recourse for whoever the accused would be in under those situations.
I just have a problem with using two unconstitutional statutes as our shining example on the Hill that we want to achieve.
Well, and the fact that these are Fremont and Grand Island, and we haven't seen any cases that they've had to deal with, and we're not seeing any of our neighbors, we don't see Ralston, Papillion, Omaha, any of those, any of those really in our, outside of Fremont in our metro area using this system, should be a red flag for the council.
Thank you.
Is anyone? Yes, Ms. Robbins?
And so I'm assuming when you were addressing the council, you were addressing it as a citizen and not an attorney?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I have a couple of things to address. First of all, the reason that we're not seeing all cities do this is, one, I don't know if people know that it exists. It is kind of buried in the city of the first class, 16-217. Additionally, when you look at Omaha, Omaha is not a city of the first class. Therefore, Chapter 16 would not apply to the city of Omaha. That's a city of the metropolitan class. Also, it wouldn't apply to, like, Lincoln, because that's a city of the primary class. So to use some of those things as examples, they're not even in our same chapter of statutes.
Or they could have looked at it and decided it was a bad idea. That's the other option.
Do you know that, though?
No. I'm just saying. We don't know. This is all conjecture.
So additionally, there is a case, it's Shear versus, I believe it's Wayne County, that was handed out a few years ago, that talks about discipline, and it talks about the accuser also being the judge and the executioner, and they actually use those three words in that case. And I know because I was a part of that appeal. And the Supreme Court found that in discipline-type settings, it is perfectly fine to be the accuser, the judge, and the executioner in those types of settings, as long as there is a hearing and a fair process and a right to potentially appeal if they don't agree with that decision, which would all be set up here. So I do believe that, in looking at that case, that that issue is already addressed. Additionally...
Sometimes, things that are legal aren't always just the right thing to do. Sometimes, we have to raise ourselves up and not just go for what is just baseline legal. Can we do it, or should we do it? Those are two different things.
Right. And I think that we should do it, and that's not my decision. That is this council's decision. I was asked if we are able to do it under the law, and we are absolutely able to do it under the law. And if there's any kind of constitutional question, or if you don't agree with it, I would urge you to contact your senator and deal with that in the legislature, because it is something that was passed, I believe, in 1994. And it has been reviewed and amended several times since 1994, and that specific provision allowing for cities of the first class to make an ordinance has not ever been struck, has not been removed, and it has not been changed.
Has it been challenged?
It has. I don't know if it's been challenged.
So we don't know? So it's just unproven?
Well...
In the courts?
Right. And we could have this debate all night. I mean, we're both attorneys. We love to argue. But you could say that with any statute. Is any statute legal? Well, that's why we have attorneys, and that's why we both have jobs. But we have a state statute that allows us to do this, and what the city of Bellevue is currently doing is absolutely illegal because we have a law that allows us to do it.
I did not ever say it was illegal. I just said I don't think it's a good idea, and these are the reasons.
And we appreciate your feedback, and I know that everybody up here, including the council and all city staff, we're taking what you're saying, and we are absolutely listening, just like everybody else, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And a public hearing is still open. Anybody else wishing to speak on either ordinance number 3977 or 3978?
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. Not only my eyes had getting better, it was also my hearing, but what I heard that lady say was, sounded pretty good to me. But the reason I haven't been around here, you haven't seen me, because July 7th, I was diagnosed with acute myeloccybea. But, so that's the reason I'm here, but this is so important that I had to come down here. Number one, I was in the city council in 1997 to 2000, that was, that was the time I was in outsider. There was two of us, there were three of us that got into council. Dave Sanborn, Kathy Kalkowski, myself. And what they tried to do is they tried to recall me, and they couldn't do it, I think that Jerry Ryan and S.P. Benson and John Shazie Sr., I think, I can't prove it, but I think they hired somebody to get signatures, they didn't get enough signatures. But if this resolution would have been, it would have been in effect at that time, I'm sure they would have found a way to try to get me to have you guys vote me out of the council. And that's not the way it should be. The people should, people vote you in, the people should vote you out. It's as simple as that. It just doesn't make sense. I don't know why we're doing it. I don't know who started this. I know the reasons why you started it, to begin with. Certainly, I like to see the comparison. If Mr. Shannon's right about it not being constitutional, and you have to have 100% except for one person, that legislation should have the authority to do this, not the executive party. Another thing, too, is that while I'm on it, I think you should bring back the public requests be heard so people can speak. You can respond back to them, but you haven't had anybody come up here and say anything anymore, because, I don't think, because of that reason. But it's just not, it's not, it's just not a good resolution, and I, we'll see, I think, we'll see who, when I was, when I was in the council, we had our, the three of us, we had the swamp people. The rest of the swamp was, and I want to see who are the swamp people this time, we're going to vote for this. It should not be a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick, and it's good seeing you again.
Hi, I'm Jim Modry. Live at 1207 Rebecca Court in Bellevue. I agree with about everything that's been said tonight, with one exception, that the city administrator's only role within this ordinance is to process the charge coming forward. That's not correct, as I read the ordinance. Under Section 3A, if after review, the city administrator determines that only a written reprimand would be appropriate, the city administrator will meet with the charged council member or mayor, explain the charges, hear the council member's position, and decide whether a written reprimand should be issued or whether no action should be taken. So the city administrator has the authority to, on his own, decide and issue a written reprimand against whatever member the charge may be against. I think that should, again, be something that would be forwarded to the council for determination, not just to the sole determination of the city administrator, especially since elected officials are not employees of the city, do not work for the city administrator. He should be in no position to issue discipline to them. Additionally, under Section B3, after we've gone to a hearing of the council after a resolution has been forwarded...
Mr. Modry?
Yes.
Just a quick question on your first point. Since you were a council member...
Yes.
You are probably also aware that the city administrator being involved in this process whatsoever is a violation of Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules reserves any discipline to the body.
That's true.
The administrative branch cannot be even involved whatsoever.
Yep. I believe that's correct.
It's one of the ways that this ordinance is flawed.
There's also some issues with the wording of the ordinance in Section B, subparagraph 3. They talk about unanimous vote. And then if the council finds or determines that the official in question is guilty of misconduct, rendering him or her an unfit person to hold such office, then they may determine the appropriate sanction to be applied. That kind of implies they've already determined the appropriate sanction, and their appropriate sanctions can be a written reprimand, a public reprimand, and so forth. So I think those words, rendering him or her an unfit person to hold such office, should not be there. Those were taken directly from the Fremont and Grand City ordinances, which only address removal from public office. The, well, I guess, can we talk on policy resolution 35 with this as well?
Sorry, I did not give an audible answer. Yes. Yes, you can do that.
And, well, there is an issue with the beginning of this resolution that I think has been existing in the resolution since it's been in place. They talk about proper operation of democratic government. We are a republican form of government. That's guaranteed to us by the U.S. Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, which guarantees to every state a republican form of government. There is a difference, a big difference, between a democratic form of government and a republican, republic form of government. Anyhow, it goes through, and principles of conduct and decorum, that were all there previously, now says any such violation may be considered misconduct, and they may be subject to removal from office, is outlined in the city code that's being added. I am not sure that all of those things listed really rise to the level of being misconduct by an elected official. There's a statement read at the beginning of each of these meetings about personal impertinent slanderous attacks and so forth. What's impertinent? What's personal? And whose judgment goes into defining those? Again, definition and ambiguity. There are certain things in here that definitely would be misconduct, accepting gifts and, you know, getting financial gain, and all those kinds of things, which would be expected. Using inflammatory, abusive, or disparaging, what's inflammatory? What's disparaging? Kind of a language that you may use. So I would just recommend a look-through of all those various conditions that are listed for misconduct, and get the ones that are obvious that really are misconduct. And, yeah, and I looked at Fremont and Grand Island ordinances as well, and they just talk about misconduct and the ability of removing that person from office, and they don't, they don't go into all the detail and so forth of involving the city administrator and how that'll be done, and they don't talk about other degrees of discipline, which we are doing with ours, which I think, which is probably fine, but again, the city administrator has no, no authority to discipline elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, one more question for you. Sorry. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. As a former elected official who sat on this council, how do you feel about the provisions in the ordinance where it's saying that any citizen can bring a complaint forward? I mean, if if there was a question about your residency or something like that, you could die the death of a thousand cuts. I mean, you know, any one person, I mean, now all of a sudden you don't have to go through the recall process. Person after person just keeps filing complaints. What's your thought on that? How do you feel about that as someone that's sat here before?
Yeah, I don't know. It it could lead to issues. Again, the the first step of having somebody kind of screen those complaints is good and they have the city administrator doing that now. I think may may help with some of that, but but again, it really opens you up. You, on the council, you can't please everybody all the time and you're not going to. And there may be people that are unhappy for the positions you're taking and so they come forward with some kind of charge. That's always a possibility. I don't know what we can do about that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. There were several legal statements in there. Like to have Bree address anything that she caught there.
Yeah, I want to thank you for those ideas. I wrote every one of them down and I thought that that was really good feedback and for all of us to consider. I just wanted to talk about the city administrator quick and provide a response of why that was put in there in the first place. And it kind of ties into what Mr. Shannon had just said at the end and your response to that. We added the city administrator in as kind of the initial gatekeeper of the complaints so that we didn't have, you know, citizens filing complaints about anything against the council members and then having a a public hearing on every matter that came in. And so that's why the city administrator and and that was kind of my take on it was to have a gatekeeper come in and make sure that under A1 and 2, that the initial requirements for filing a complaint are met and that it actually does tie into a misconduct that's outlined in policy 35. So that it can't just be any complaint, like I don't like how Mr. Shannon voted, so I'm going to file a complaint and then we're going to have a hearing on it. So it it's not meant for that and so that's why that language was was put in there originally. I really liked your suggestion with the city administrator not making the decision for a written reprimand at that initial stage and taking that and passing that around to city council in more of an informal setting. And the reason that was put in there was again, every complaint doesn't warrant a big public hearing and and those sorts of things. And so it was kind of an initial gatekeeper idea and that's why we have these public hearings is so that we can get feedback and take that into consideration and tweak it to make it the best ordinance possible. And so I I really like that idea and that would be a suggestion moving forward before third reading that I would want to tweak and present to the city council. So I appreciate that. Your suggestion on 3BA regarding the language of rendering him or her unfit and that already kind of implying what the sanction would be. Again, great, great catch there. I think that it should be, you know, they should find misconduct, whatever the complaint was, find misconduct and then determine the sanction. So again, those are things that going prior to third reading will be amended and we'll take those into consideration and present that to the council. Same with policy 35, again, looking, just really going back and looking word for word, every single thing that's misconduct and ensuring that, you know, that is misconduct and not just, you know, blanket reading it. We want to make sure and I'm going to go back and read each and every word of that to make sure that what's outlined as misconduct is misconduct. Additionally, I think in policy 35, at the end of each one of the rules that were already there, it said it could be considered for removal of office and that should be amended again. It should be considered a potential sanction pursuant to 2-208. So again, a really great catch. We're taking all this into consideration. All those ideas were great and I just wanted to let you know that and respond to a few of the things.
Thank you, Bree.
Hi, I'm Tom Richards, 1234 St. Andrews Road, Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm here today to speak in qualified support of the ordinance. Qualified meaning that I've heard some good dialogue already and some good ideas to make it better. Many of you know me. I like your new digs here at the city hall. Last time I was in, it was down on Mission Street. I was a city councilman from 1990 to 1994, county commissioner from 2008 to 2016. Spent 25 years working around the Nebraska Legislature and around a lot of public meetings. I'll tell you that that there's a couple of different things that need to take place. I think that with people getting excited about politics, that sometimes they don't get educated on what the processes are. What is an executive session? How do executive sessions work? I've been in a number of executive sessions over the years of working in in county government, city government, and state government. I think the first thing people need to understand is they need to get a good education on what what the law is and what your responsibilities are. I think the second thing is that people need to educate and enforce amongst themselves the rules of your operations, that the greatest policer of the what's going to take place in your executive sessions are you as the individual members. I can think of numerous times, one specifically when I was on the city council, where people strayed from what the executive session was supposed to be about. I remember walking out of the executive session, coming back into the chambers and sitting down and nobody asking me why I was sitting there. Well, I gave my two cents worth that I thought it was straying off and what the point was and that was my way of enforcing my own position about that that was not an appropriate thing to do. I think that the next thing is if you have to take some type of disciplinary action, the progressive steps which you've kind of laid out makes sense to me. This this is not a trial, you know, this is not, this is politics. This is, this is your procedures and it's not a trial and it's not, the second phase of it would be a jurisdictional judicial matter. But at this point, it's not a trial and you have a process in place and taking input to make it the best process as possible would be the appropriate thing to do. I think the next thing is if you have somebody who's operating and talking out of school out of an executive session, that if they do that more than once, that they're not serving the public in a good in a good way. And in fact, they're becoming detrimental to the people of that they're serving and that there has to be some action taken. People don't understand that in an executive session, you you all may understand it and it's public, some of the public may understand it, but you're talking about contracts, you're talking about different things, personnel, important things that are trying to keep confidential because there's a state statute that prohibits that or that allows that to happen. And if somebody is acting in bad faith, that they're taking information out of an executive session and going to the public with what they've learned in the executive session, there has to be some kind of form of discipline to take place to make that happen. I've read the concerns from Media Nebraska, I've read the concerns about from the World Herald, and they have appropriate points that they make. The press is always going to want to have more information. But the reason why the executive session statutes were carved out is for that specific purpose. It goes through the legislature. I've been involved in at least three statute changes of public meetings and public actions to change the the statutes on executive sessions and on what's confidential in public hearings. There's a point where there's, somebody's got to keep a lid on a situation for a period of time because it it needs to be executed and it needs to be carried out. And if somebody's taken that out of the out of the executive session, that's not serving the public in the best interest and it's not a matter of public election, being elected to the office, it's somebody who is violating the law. So with that, I offer my qualified support and I hope you understand some of my reasoning as to why that why that should happen.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
If I'm out of order, tell me. I've never been here before in my life. Is your glasses, sir? Yeah, thank you. My name is George Porter. I live at 1006 West 32nd Avenue, Bellevue. I'm old and slow. All I got is a couple of questions now. If, what everybody knows the individual beside the point, if the council votes that individual out, who's going to, who's going to vote in to replace the new city council? Member? Who? Mayor?
The mayor actually pulls the name forward and the city council has to approve that person.
But who's who's going to post the name? You?
Yes.
All right, I have a problem with that. I live in Ward 1. All right, we had another mayor in here. Us voters voted for the people. And she tried to pull somebody in here and we beat her too. If the the city council did not vote them people in, the public did. Why don't they get a recall or something? You know, I mean, they tried to do that on us down in Ward 1 because we're down in nowhere. We we got her on it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Good evening, Brian Hanson, 2704 Georgia Avenue, Bellevue. I agree with all the speakers prior to me, good points and spoken better than I can speak. I think we're seeing a blending of government functions, executive, judicial, administrative, legislative, et cetera. And I'm not sure where those lines are drawn exactly. It's it's confusing a little bit to me. I think this concept of misconduct is a very nebulous one. You know, misconduct to me to me may be not misconduct to someone else. And that's changing as the days go by, even quicker than when I was a younger person and growing up and stuff, you sort of knew what misconduct was and today it's opened the paper and it's just changed. I think one of the key officials that's excluded from this proposed process is the city council president. City council president ought to be involved. If there's an issue with council members and closed sessions, et cetera, that ought to be forwarded to the city council president, whomever he or she might be, and have that body resolve it. That keeps the purity of the of the executive, legislative, and judiciary kind of apart. If that can't be resolved, then the voters ought to get a crack at it then, you know, it's it's a recall or they could anytime they want to anyway. The previous speaker to me spoke about the the replacement process and we saw that wasn't followed the last time around and stuff, so maybe that ordinance needs to be changed. Because I know I got called in and I worked for Sarpy County for that election. It cost the county, I don't, or cost the city X amount of taxpayer dollars for an election which the appointee who kept getting batted down is is not acceptable to the council in place. So, you know, there's a problem there with that type of thing. So I would just say, I I don't want to use the the trite colloquialism, is this a solution, looking for a problem? But let's get back to Main Street. Let's get back to things that, you know, need to be done in Bellevue. I, is this going to happen and, you know, are we going planning on executing this proposed ordinance in the next year or so for someone? I don't know. But, you know, let's get back to solving problems and issues that are here, et cetera. One other point, and I brought this up before with other types of ordinances brought up. I think there's a fatal flaw in the way Bellevue introduces ordinances to the legislative process and that needs to go through a council member. Which council member introduced this, these two ordinances? I'd like to know their names or at least the one that that brings it to the forefront and stuff. There's no provisions, there is no nothing in in the Bellevue ordinances of who can introduce an ordinance to the legislative process. All legislative bodies require at least one person to garner that support of that legislation for it to hit the legislative process. Otherwise, it disposes itself. It's it's moot. It's not there. So I think that's something needs fixing before we're going to find out how to punish and remove and censure, et cetera, folks. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Just to remind the public, we have the public hearing open for ordinance number 3977, ordinance number 3978, and resolution 35.
My name is Roseanne Johnson. I have been a resident of Bellevue for all of five days now, so I'm here to speak to this issue. I'm a retired journalist. I was a journalist in Omaha for 46 years before retiring a year and a half ago. And I am quite familiar with the open meetings law and executive sessions. I will tell you that in consulting with some of my friends who are journalists and retired journalists, one of the things that routinely give journalists heartburn are executive sessions because we don't know what goes on in there and and in fact, then the public doesn't know what goes on in there. And there have been times, as my friend Tom Richards just alluded to, that the that the call for an executive session went out of bounds and nobody blew the whistle on it. We know that. I fundamentally believe that that removing someone from office, and this is as a resident of Bellevue and a private citizen, removing someone from office is a very big deal and should not be entrusted to four or five people to make that decision. So I have a, I I don't argue that you have the authority under state law. The question is, should you use that authority to do it? And I would say as a resident of Bellevue and a citizen of the state of Nebraska, I don't think you should use that. That is, that is something totally outside of the journalistic world. Moving back into the realm of journalism and where I would disagree a bit with Tom Richards. Yeah, journalists do want information. They want as much information as they can possibly get. We don't do it for our own benefit. We do it for the public. We are the eyes and ears of the public. I'm looking for information. My fellow journalists are looking for information for the public, not for our own welfare. In fact, people criticize this and say you do this for the ratings or you do it to sell newspapers. The bottom line to it is covering the Bellevue City Council isn't particularly good for ratings or selling newspapers. It's a civic duty and getting information is a civic duty that we have and we take very seriously. So, yeah, getting more information is important. And I fundamentally believe that no one, no elected official should be threatened with the loss of their office just for speaking publicly on a matter. I I can't begin to tell you in my entire time of covering news and covering more meetings than any of you have ever been to, not once has someone come out of an executive session and revealed something that was particularly damaging. The use of the executive session is allowed. I'm very familiar with the reasons for that. But just, but again, just because something is permitted doesn't mean you have to do it. Not every real estate deal, not every personnel decision, not every issue like that, not every contract needs to be hashed out behind closed doors. We're at a time where people have huge mistrust of government and what you're talking about is making government less transparent, threatening people who speak out. And that, to me, is is just wrong. And it has nothing to do with whether you are permitted to do it under state law, but rather, what's right? And should we be doing this? You you talked about Omaha and Lincoln, don't do it because they are a certain class of city. Well, the fact of the matter is that they function quite well without doing it. So my question is, where is this coming from? I've said my piece, but I have a question for you and that is, where's this coming from? Why is it necessary?
Ms. Johnson, are you, I'm I'm a little confused on what you're stating. Are you saying that one of these council members should come out and give you information as a journalist out of closed session?
What I'm saying is.
Are you saying that if he does, he shouldn't be penalized for that? There should be no penalty for him?
Well, I don't think he should be removed from office for coming out and saying something.
Let's just let's just state there, let's just say there was a, and I'm just asking questions. Let's say there was a billion dollar corporation coming to town and we're negotiating that and he comes out of closed session and says, yeah, it's Toyota's coming and they're going to move to the south side of the base. And all of a sudden that land goes, it it kills Bellevue's deal. So you don't think that person should be disciplined for for?
I don't think that they should be removed from office. I think that, I think it is highly, first of all, I think it's highly unlikely that that would happen. And if it did, you have all kinds of other sanctions. The removal from office is where I have. Uh, the removal from office is where I have a, a lot of problem with this whole thing because I think that's the right of the voters.
What, what are the other sanctions? What, and we're looking for ideas too. So what are the other sanctions you would impose on it?
You know, if you publicly come out in a city council meeting and say that coun, uh, the council president spoke out of turn and cost Bellevue a billion dollars, which is highly unlikely, but let's say that they did that, you, you come out and say that, if he starts costing his constituents a billion dollars, do you think there isn't going to be a recall election? There's absolutely going to be one. You know, somebody's going to start that. But that's the right of the voter, not the right of four or five people.
What about, um, what would you say about, uh, somebody that was discriminating or making sexual innuendos or harassment as a council?
Well, there are a lot of, there are a lot of procedures to take care of that. I would say again, if that's happening, that ought to be something that is brought out publicly and negotiated in the court of public opinion, not removing some, not five people making that decision.
I feel that ordinance is something that brings it out into the public eye. It's, it's a way of being, um, more transparent. It's, it's-
I, I just, you know, I, I feel like, you know, I'm arguing this as a citizen of Bellevue and not a journalist on this point.
And I am as well.
And that is, I just absolutely think that removing someone from office, someone who has been legally elected, should not rest in the hands of a handful of people. I just have a problem with that. And you can tell me all day long that that's okay under state law, and I'm not going to argue that with you. That probably is something that ought to be addressed on that level. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you ought to do it.
Thank you.
I think one of my constituents put that very well. Um, and I've gotten hundreds of people calling and, you know, giving me feedback on this. But the way they describe this is, you go to dinner, you go out to a movie, you go to a store, and you see someone else's kids misbehaving. Maybe you want to go over there and correct them, but they're not your kids to correct. And that's the situation we're faced with here tonight. They're not the mayor's kids to go correct. He has no business correcting the council.
But I, I still have yet to have my question answered, and that is, where's this coming from? You know, why, why is this necessary?
So I'll address a couple of things. One thing that you said is, um, that, and I know that you're speaking as a citizen, but you have prior experience in journalism, um, and that as a journalist, as I'm sure other journalists in here tonight, um, they want information. And that's why you come to the meetings. And it's not information that you're just going to take home for your own knowledge. It's something that you want to disseminate to, um, the community, and we all appreciate that. Um, if it's an action item, if it's something that's going to be voted on, it would come out of closed session and there could be open and free discussion on that issue during the discussion period prior to a vote. So all of that information would be there. They could answer those questions for you after, um, if it's an action item and there would be no complaint, there would be no hearing, there would be no sanction. It's the items that are not action items and items such as litigation. As an attorney, there are times where I need to go into closed session to inform the council about pending litigation. There's a pending annexation case, for example. If I need to talk to the city council members about that annexation case in private, I should be able to do that. And I can't do it behind closed doors because it has to be in a, it has to be an open meeting, and then they, there has to be a motion to go into closed session. So that's the only time that I'm, that I'm allowed to do that. So I discuss strategy, I discuss, um, litigation plans, and then somebody goes out and leaks that to the media or talks to somebody else about that, and now my entire litigation is done because of that.
How often has that happened?
It has happened.
How often?
It has happened, and I fear going into closed session because we continually have information disseminated out of closed session that are not action items. And it is concerning to me to even have some of those conversations with the council because of those issues. Additionally, if it's a personnel matter, under Nebraska law, the, the personnel individual, so let's say you're an employee of the city and we need to discuss you or discipline tonight with the city council, it's your right to ask to go into closed session. So if you ask to go into closed session, we have to go into closed session. That's your confidential personnel information that you have asked to be confidential by requesting a closed session, and there's no action item required, and then that information is leaked. I think if people were on the other end and the receiving end of that, they may understand this a little bit better. But that's why we have closed session. It's not because we're trying to hide information or make journalists' jobs hard and not get the information. It's because there are truly items that need to be in closed session that are not action items.
And I don't want you to think that I am trying to defend, uh, people coming out and divulging information that could give, potentially harm someone's reputation or cause a billion dollar loss to the city of Bellevue. That's not what I'm defend, I'm defending. I'm just saying if someone is in executive session and something goes on in there that they really feel like they publicly need to come out and discuss, I think that having the threat of losing their council seat is just too much. I think that that is just, I think that is an entitlement for the voter, not for five people.
Right, and we'll agree, we'll agree to disagree on that, but there are progressive sanctions outlined in there. It's not, if, if I'm just going to pick on Councilwoman Welch for a second, if she discloses something from closed session, it's not, there's not going to be a complaint, a hearing, and you're going to oust her. It's going to start at that bottom level, and that's why the, um, progressive sanctions were added in there, is because there should be other steps prior to getting to removal of office unless it's something so bad that would warrant that, and that's outlined in the policy thirty-five. Um, but you have to have information. If, if that member wants to talk publicly about it, they need to wait until it's an action item. Wait until it's a matter before, on the agenda for an action item as a vote, and then they can have that conversation. But they cannot have that conversation if it's not an action item. Otherwise, there's no point in closed session. There's no point in closed session if anybody can come out and disclose what is said in closed session. And, and the Nebraska law, and it's used all over the state, and state and local governments use closed session to protect that information. There's no point in, in that if it's okay for people to come out and have those conversations. And, and you have to have a sanction. If there's no sanction, they're going to continually do it. And that's, that's been a problem, and it's been a repeated problem.
How does Omaha, how does Lincoln, how does the Douglas County Board deal with this problem without this kind of a-
There is an article, and I don't, I don't remember who published it, and so I don't want to butcher the, um, newspaper that it was in. But there was a newspaper article that I read, um, pretty early on after the release of the first draft of the ordinance, and there was a conversation had with the Omaha City Attorney. And the Omaha City Attorney supported the fact that there have to be closed sessions and that they utilize closed sessions for those things allowed by law all the time, and that it hasn't been an issue in his council. They have councils that are, that are abiding by the rules, understand closed sessions, understand the importance, so it's not an issue that they've had to deal with. I believe there was also a quote in that same article from, um, somebody from Papillion that also said, "Yeah, we use closed sessions all the time, but we don't have an issue because people understand the point of closed sessions and they keep that information, information confidential unless it's an action item." I don't remember who published that article, but it was released-
You're, you're missing the point of what I'm saying. I'm not disagreeing that closed sessions are allowed or unnecessary. I am just, I am saying that Omaha doesn't feel that they have a problem where they need this kind of regulation, and they deal with, with a lot more money and, and bigger issues than Bellevue does. And I, I think that, you know, there was, there was a quote in the newspaper and, and in one of the television stories that it's very unlikely that, uh, this removal from office will ever be used. And someone said to me, "Well, you know what? You don't go out and buy a lawn mower if you don't intend to mow the lawn." So I think that, I, I think you're just going too far. I think the open meetings law exists, and I think it, there is a purpose for it, but I think that this removal from office is, you know, we're going to disagree on this all night. So I, you know, we're not talking about the legalities of it. We're talking about what's right, and I think this is not right.
Ma'am, if it makes you feel any better, several of us council members that are level-headed have already sworn, "We will never allow any part of this to ever be used." Okay? So they can pass it, they can be stupid, they can do anything they want, it's never going to be allowed to be used. Okay? So I want you to go home tonight and realize, they can pass it, they can do whatever the hell they want, they're still not going to get it.
Well, in parting, I would just say that I, I ask you to consider how serious removal from office is and question whether a handful of people should make the decision to overturn a legitimate election.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Shannon, would you like to point out the ones that are level-headed on the council here? Thank you.
We'll see that when the vote comes.
Hello, uh, my name is John Masters, I live in nine oh eight Casper Street. So I want to speak in opposition to this. Um, I have a couple of issues with it. Uh, first one is it feels like that when you guys would be able to vote out, uh, somebody from office with this, that you're taking away my right to vote for my representative. How do I hold you accountable for voting my representative out of office? That seems like a big issue to, for, to me. Um, also seems like that if one of, an individual council member has a problem with another individual council member, sure, we have a defined misconduct on there, but it allows that process to get started. They're going to be looking to do that all the time to get their point across, have a super majority of people that want to get one person out of office there, just don't think it's the right way to be handled for that. And it really just takes away my choice to vote for my representative and hold them accountable. I mean, if you do something wrong, we should, we already should have sanctions and censures or recall process in place to take care of that. I feel that's a good process already and that this change is unnecessary for that. Um, I saw that you also had the, uh, media, uh, e, send a letter, and I agree almost completely with that, that, you know, closed sessions are definitely something that you need to be careful of because of how, of the limiting information that is there for it. And, sorry? It has a real effect on the ability for us as a public to stay informed on what you guys are talking about and what's going on and what's happening. So I, I just, I think that put more rules in place to hold people accountable, but removal of office is going too far for that. That's a choice that us as a voter gets on there. So that's my piece on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masters.
Hello. My name is Nicole Leclair. I live at eighteen oh two Brenda Drive. Um, I've been going to meetings in Omaha, many, many meetings over the last year and a half, in regards to the Juvenile Justice Center. So I'm very familiar with Douglas County and Omaha and community and public meetings these days. Um, so I haven't come here, but this has drawn me out, and we're all watching, is what I want to say. Um, so I'm very concerned, and a lot of people are concerned. Questions are, who's going to decide, like other people have said, the misconduct? What is misconduct? How do we define that? How is it going to be decided? Um, what is it? Um, so, and I also want to say that if this had happened in Omaha, and I've talked to Don Preister, where is he? There he is. So I talked to him about, um, at one point, the rules were changed for how we could get up and talk to you all here, and that was debated in Omaha, and Don Klein got up and finally decided we couldn't do what you guys decided to do. So this is very concerning when you start messing with, um, citizens' right to get up here and talk. We're going to look even closer. So if this has happened in Omaha, the building that we saved would be down, the Juvenile Justice Center would be built, Jim Kavanaugh would be off the Douglas County Commissioner Board, because he is not popular on that board. I watched the evil eyes toward him. So it's very concerning if you all are going to decide, one, oh, we don't like that person, they're not voting the way we like them to vote. That is very concerning, and I really want you to step back, slow down on that. And I'm going to say there are two litigation cases over what we fought over the last year and a half, and that could happen here too. I'm not threatening that, but I've observed that happening. That's how the building got saved, and that's how the Juvenile Justice Center is not built yet. So it's almost as if, you know, citizens have to sue the government in order to make the right thing happen, which is ridiculous. Um, we're voting you in to do your job, not to run a court on each other. So I hope it doesn't come to litigation. Um, and both Stinson and Rusty Hayek, I talked to you at a little neighborhood meeting before you were elected, and I talked to you about what I'd been doing, and we talked about transparency, and I don't see that this is heading toward transparency. You know, and you promised that it would be, oh, that was very important to you, and I'm watching it not happen. Um, and I just ask you, you know, what is your job, really? Um, someone was asking if this has to be voted on tonight for it to have a third reading. I'm not sure how you all work here. Um, and as far as more information, yes, we want more information. Um, Mr. Richards talked about that. We're always wanting more information. And what I've observed about the media is what I see in four-hour meetings, they cannot report everything that happens in four-hour meetings. Um, so yes, we're going to keep wanting information, and I just hope that you can step back. And, um, I'm, I'm also observing that, you know, we're kind of writing some of this, and I, I questioned some of the language in the ordinance. Um, which one is this? A, three, B, if after review, the city administrative feels said written charge. And the word of feels in here is very concerning. I feel a lot of things, but I don't think we should be acting on my feelings. So I just really encourage you to step back and remember that you all voted in office and you can all be voted out, and that's really our goal, what's happening in Douglas County. Um, and in Omaha is we're looking to who's next. So vote in some different people. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Leclair. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Given this is a public hearing on ordinance number three nine seven seven, three nine seven eight, and resolution number thirty-five. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Welch.
I have been a victim of sexual harassing language in the past, and I can tell you that if it was an employee of the city of Bellevue, another government agency, or private enterprise, investigation and discipline would have been warranted. Under our current ordinances, there is no accountability and/or no action can be taken against the perpetrator. This ordinance creates trans, more transparency within our city government. This ordinance brings unprofessional and improper conduct and behavior to the public's attention, and while the first time may not warrant removal from the office, the public may choose to not put up with this type of behavior. We hold our city employees to a high standard when they are conducting city business, and it should be no different for our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Shannon?
Thank you. We had, uh, several people that sent in letters and emails that, uh, requested that, uh, they be acknowledged and added to the record. So I want to take a minute. And we had a Roxanne Hardbeck, if I said that name correctly, who, uh, sent in her opposition to this. And we had a letter from the ACLU opposing this.
And then Mrs. Johnson, but she was here. Ms. Johnson?
Okay. Just want to make sure we got everybody on the record that was opposing this. Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else have any comments? Councilman Stinson?
Listened to everybody tonight. I agree totally with a lot of what's been said here this evening. Anybody that follows me on the, on my council page, on, uh, the Facebook site, I've already put out my stance on this. I do believe it's the right of the people to take us out of office if they feel that that needs to be done. So I will not be backing this ordinance. And, uh, that's pretty much my stance on it. The people, the people put us in, the people need to take us out if they feel that it's needed, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all the citizens, uh, for coming, for voicing your opinions, giving us some very good feedback. Uh, thank you to past council members and county commissioner for coming up and giving your feedback. This is a serious issue. I think it is part of what we have to do for the well-being of the city. Councilwoman Welch just talked about the fact of sexual harassment. We're not just focusing on what happens in closed session, we're- We're not just focusing on what happens in closed session, we're talking about serious behavior. What about quid pro quo kinds of things going on? It isn't just at the federal level where there may be an inquiry about impeaching somebody, those things can happen in Bellevue. We also have sexual harassment. There's a Me Too movement going on right now, and women are standing up and not taking it. But there are a lot of women in the city staff who are intimidated and are not going to speak up because it's a council member. We have a serious problem here, and at this point, we don't have the best solution, and the solution can be improved. I would welcome any other, I've just heard people say, yes, you should discipline, but don't remove somebody from office. That's why we did it in a more progressive fashion, so that it isn't immediate, it's more the three strikes, you're out, and we're trying to gather more information so we can make a good decision and move forward in the best interest of all the citizens. It isn't just about closed session, it's about a whole lot more than that that's potential to be inflicted, and some of which has already been. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon?
I guess my concerns are the things that aren't being addressed here. One of the things that this does is makes council members city officials and puts us under the city administrator, and that's the part of the ordinance I have the biggest heartburn worth, is I am not a city official, I am an elected representative of the people, okay? And I do my job, and I represent the people, and I talk to the media, and I give them feedback, I answer their questions, okay? And when they start coming to us and asking us about real estate commissions and about council members attending closed sessions illegally because they have a conflict, or they started talking about, you know, other things going on in the city, it's our duty to answer their questions and to give them the information we have. Now, I'm not saying that it, you know, there's a billion-dollar corporation coming, we're going to give them that information, but, you know, we need to be responsive so that we're staying transparent to the public here, okay? So, I think there's a lot more going on here. I think it's the things that are being swept under the rug and not addressed that are probably the bigger concerns, and I'm hearing that from a lot of constituents.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so, ordinance number 3977, the third reading and vote will occur November 19th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If the city attorney is going back to rewrite this now, why don't we have another public hearing when we get the final version written? That way the public can comment on the changes we're making. I think it's only fair that the public be allowed to comment on the actual ordinance, you know? This is a work in progress, yes, we're going to go through and make a whole bunch of changes. I feel like the public ought to have the right to comment on that as well. So, I would bring it back for public hearing next meeting in its final form.
Okay. I, no objection to that, I think that there are going to be some rewrites to this based off of everybody's comments tonight, based off of feedback from council, that's what it's here for, is it's an evolving document to try to make it the best ordinance possible. I think procedurally what we're, what we would need to do is have a motion to table this third reading, or table the third reading until December and set it for public hearing, just so the record's clear on what we're doing, because otherwise it's automatically going to settle for third reading at the next hearing.
Okay. What are the two dates?
Two dates in December, 17th is one of them, so the third would be the other, I think.
Yeah, so, it would be another second, or another public hearing on November 19th, and then third reading on the third, or you could do third reading on the 19th and still open it up for public hearing at that time, at third reading again, if you wanted to do it that way.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we table this for now, bring it back on the 19th of November for public hearing, and set the third reading for December 3rd.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, to table ordinance number 3977 until November 19th?
December 3rd.
For a public, public hearing is November 19th. For a public hearing, then, another public hearing November 19th with the final third reading on December 3rd.
Yes.
Any questions? Councilman Cook?
Is it for ordinance 3977, 3978, and policy resolution 35?
I think it's all three, but we're still going to have to go, because you have to read an ordinance three times by title pursuant to statute, so I think we're still going to have to tonight read through them, with the understanding that they're all lumped in, so.
No, I get that. I just don't want people to think that it's just the one part of the ordinance.
Yeah, it would be, it would be all of them.
For everything we just talked about.
And maybe Mr. Shannon can clarify that in a motion, or in his motion.
I would amend the motion to address all three items, ordinance 3977, 3978, and policy resolution 35.
Okay, we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister, to table ordinance number 3977, ordinance number 3978, and resolution number 35, until November 19th where there will be another public hearing, and the third reading will be December 3rd. Any further comments? Please vote.
So, I still think that you have to read 12B by title. Yeah.
All voted yes.
Okay, thank you. So, in keeping with the policy, I'm going to go ahead and read 12C, ordinance number 3978, ordinance, an ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 2 of the Bellevue City Code by adding a new section 2-208 regarding removal of elected officials for misconduct. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 2 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section 2-208 regarding removal of elected official for misconduct and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, we've already had the public hearing, and we have a motion, or we had a agreement to move another public hearing to November 19th and the third reading on December 3rd. All right, moving to 12D, ordinance number 3979, request to rezone lots 1 through 72 and outlots A through C, Bell Lago replat from RG 50 PS and RG 28 PS to RG 8 PS with site plan approval in order to facilitate a townhome development. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southeast corner of 48th Street and Cape Heart, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, but I'll start with the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, which is HRC Bell Lago LLC, actually kind of a boy or young development here, continuation or replating of the original Bell Lago that was before you quite some time ago. With me tonight is Justin Zetterman, a being a consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. What we're seeking to do is do a new preliminary plat, final plat, to allow for 72 townhomes style units and three outlots, which include the roadway systems and drainage ways, and to rezone the property. It was originally rezoned as part of the original plat, to RG 50 planned subdivision and RG 28 planned subdivision, and we're now rezoning it to RG 8 planned subdivision. So, the project consists of a number of fourplexes and their townhome style units. There are essentially two floor plans, there's one floor plan that's 1,643 square feet, and then you, of course, with the fourplexes, you have two exterior, two interior type units. So, the exterior units will have an average value of $213,900 each, and the interior units on the 1,643 square foot units will have an average value of $203,900. And then the other floor plan is 1,515 square feet, and again, on the exterior two units, they believe that the average value of those units will be $203,900, and then the interior units will be $193,900 on average. The previous project that was approved as part of the original Bell Lago plat was, again, zone for multifamily, it had 120 units, which is actually 48 units more than what's before you tonight, as far as the townhome concepts of the density is decreased quite a bit. The, there are private streets, which are courts and plazas, they'll, and then there's, of course, the common areas, the drainage ways, and there's a number of sidewalks, et cetera, that will be all maintained by a homeowners association, so snow removal, maintenance, everything with respect to the street systems and the common areas will be maintained by homeowners association. So, this comes to you tonight with favorable recommendation of staff, favorable recommendation of the planning commission, happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I understand that the vote will probably, in all likelihood, be on the 19th. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. Is this going to be set up, the, I know, understand the developer, but who's going to be building these properties? Is this going to be a builder or several custom builders?
This will be the home company.
Okay.
Yes, so, it, which is now owned by the Hubbell Realty folks, so, yeah, it'll be the home company that will be building these.
Okay. And from what I understand, that price range that you were talking about really brings in that affordable housing, which is something that we've been looking for in the Bellevue areas.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the public hearing is open, is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding ordinance number 3979? Anybody else wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Third reading and vote will occur November 19th, 2019, at 6:00 PM here in the council Item 12D1, approval of preliminary plat, no action required at this time. Item 12D2, approval of final plat, no action required at this time. Item 12D3, approval of the Second Amendment to the Bell Lago subdivision agreement for lots 1 through 72 and outlots A through C, Bell Lago replat, no action required. 12E, ordinance number 3980, request to rezone lot 1, South Woods replat 3 from MH, BGH, and RG 8 to RG 8 for the purpose of an elementary school, applicant Kenneth Han Architects, general location Fort Crook Road and Child's Road West. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road and Child's Road West, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and the public hearing is for all items under 12E. Is the applicant here, I believe so. Councilman Preister?
Before the public hearing starts, I just want to make a comment, and that is, this is just the rezoning portion, and putting everything into one zoning shouldn't be controversial, it consolidates things. If there's controversy, it's probably on the next item, and because this item and the following have been delayed in the planning commission, where they held an additional meeting, and because we're near the end of the construction season, I'm suggesting that at the end of the public hearing, we at least vote tonight, suspend the rules, and vote tonight on this portion, just the rezoning. So, I put that out there prior, so if anybody's interested, they can make any comments on that action.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hyke, members of the Bellevue City Council. My name is Cheryl Logan, C-H-E-R-Y-L, Logan, L-O-G-A-N, 3215 Coming Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. I am here today in my official capacity as the superintendent of the Omaha Public Schools in support of Agenda Item 12E, ordinance 3980. I want to begin by thanking each of you who are available to chat with me directly about our plans for the new elementary school near the intersection of Fort Crook Road and Child's Road. We are very excited about the opportunity and hope you will support this ordinance. The Omaha Public Schools currently serves 2,316 students from Sarpy County, almost all of whom reside in the city of Bellevue. I can assure you that we take our responsibility to serve every single one of our students very seriously, no matter where they are located. Frankly, that is why I'm here today. We have been very fortunate that the taxpayers of our school district have trusted us enough to pass two substantial bonds, bond issues in the past five years totaling almost $1 billion. We have made or are making nearly $36 million in improvements to the schools we currently have in Bellevue. We have added new programs like urban agriculture and brought new partners such as the Boys and Girls Club. As part of our campaign, we made a commitment to those who reside here in Bellevue that we would construct a new elementary school, which will result in an additional investment of $21 million. We intend to keep that commitment. As you might imagine, the decision about where to place such a school is not a simple one, particularly when we take into consideration that we are a school district located in a densely populated urban area. We put a great deal of thought into the selection of this site. It was our goal to make every effort to avoid displacing homeowners. We are also cognizant of the locations of existing facilities to ensure and effectively manage school attendance zones. From a transportation standpoint, we considered ease of access while minimizing the impact on our residential neighbors. As stewards of taxpayer dollars, cost, of course, was also significant. Throughout the process, we have worked to be good partners with the city of Bellevue. Schools are a critical part of the fabric of a neighborhood. We believe we are just that, neighbors, and the students who reside and attend our schools are your future adult residents. We appeared before the council nearly three years ago, on January 23rd, 2017, to provide you with an outline of our plans and to answer any questions that you might have about what we are plan, what we're planning. We continue to update the city of our activities through the planning director, Chris Shuchuk. We worked with the planning department in anticipation of our application for rezoning and a conditional use permit. We very much appreciate the work that Chris Shuchuk and now Tammy Palm and their team have done throughout this process. We particularly appreciate that they have been steadfast in their recommended approval of our application at each of the three planning commission meetings, and again, here today. Let me take a moment to talk about the planning commission. As I referenced, we appeared before them on three separate occasions. The July 25th, 2019 meeting was the first time we became aware that there were any safety concerns about our proposal. We would never build a school that jeopardized our student's safety. Student's safety is our first priority. Having said that, in the spirit of cooperation, we took those concerns to heart. Once again, working in conjunction with the planning department, we tried to address them. We added language to the proposed conditional use permit in which we agreed to provide transportation to every st- to every student living east of Fort Crook Road that would otherwise have been within our normal walk, one-mile walk zone. We also agreed to reroute bus traffic to avoid stacking near the adjacent railroad tracks, which will impact the neighborhood. We also redesigned the sidewalks to facilitate flow into the building that avoided Fort Crook Road. The ordinance before you today includes language approved by the city attorney that incorporates all of those changes. We have a tremendous project that will benefit the students, the neighborhood, the school district, and the city of Bellevue. New schools spur new development. Schools are great neighbors. New schools increase property values. We believe the steps we have agreed to take up to this point demonstrate our willingness to partner with you to make this a great facility that becomes an anchor not only for the neighborhood, but for the city of Bellevue as it revisits its plan for Fort Crook Road. I would like to offer a written copy of my remarks, a letter that further outlines the district's position on this application, the video of the city council meeting, the videos of the three planning board meetings, and the staff recommendation made at each of those meetings into the record. Thank you as well to Kenneth Hahn, who is here, our architect, and Mr. Jeremy Cobb, Omaha Public Schools Director of School Operations, who are here to assist in answering any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against?
Twice in one night, Tom Richards, one-two-three-four, St. Andrews Road, Bellevue. I'm here to testify in support of the rezoning and the placement of the elementary school on Child's Road and Fort Crook Road. I don't do this lightly. I don't normally testify in opposition to what a planning commission wants to do. But I was part of the plan on Fort Crook Road. I was the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce for a number of times. And when Megan was the executive director and part of the Fort Crook Road redevelopment plan, the south part of Fort Crook Road has developed relatively well. The northern part of Fort Crook Road has, has kind of lingered and not taken off like the southern part has taken off. I guess I'm here to speak to the, to the part that this would be an addition that would be an anchor to the north part of Fort Crook Road, a good piece of development. And I don't do it lightly with the safety factors that the planning commission talked about. But if safety is going to be the golden rule of planning, then I look at kids going across Fort Crook Road at Galvin Road. I look at kids going across the road at Golden Hills on three-seventy. I look at in front of Bellevue University, there's no sidewalks. I mean, you, you could go follow that anywhere you want to follow the safety thing about, you know, over, overstating that fact. But I don't do this lightly, but I am in support of the building of the school at Fort Crook and Child's Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, second time again as well. I have just a couple of concerns about the school that I want to make sure.
Name an address.
John, nine oh eight Cathras Street. Just a couple of concerns that I have about the school, same that the planning commission had on there as well. Safety is a big one. So, let's imagine that our kids are missing the bus. And I know that they said that they would have things to have them call and get rides, but it's not going to happen for every kid. So, now they have to cross Fort Crook Road and those rail tracks. There's no good crosswalks there. There's no bridges or anything to get those kids across. That's a concern. I want to make sure it is just noted. It's something that the reason the planning commission decided to not recommend their approval for it. So, one of the other ones is, I know they had, they talked about the bus stacking, but that is definitely still a concern there because if you, you have all those buses stacked up on Fort Crook and while they were trying to get to work on already the packed JFK, that is going to add way more time to that as well. So, I want to make sure that that's, you know, is appropriately addressed for that. But my biggest concern is, again, just the safety because kids will be walking across that street. There is no good way to get across Fort Crook right now as a pedestrian. So, no matter where you are on Fort Crook North Side, you're on, over by Avery Road or anything, there's not a good way to get across the street carefully. So, that's a big concern I have, and I want to make sure that was addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just answer to one of those remarks there. You'd said that the buses would be stacked up there. They have a plan to stack those on Nebraska Ave, so should not be an issue with that.
My name is Deborah Duff, and I am a homeowner, excuse me, a homeowner on eleven oh seven Denver Street. I'm here because I've received a couple of letters because I live within three hundred feet of whatever. I'm not exactly positive. I've been trying to look at maps and trying to figure out. First of all, I want to let you know that I am an original homeowner and have lived in my house for over forty-one years. So, I am very, very aware of the area. So, I have no problems with schools. I'm, you know, as a matter of fact, my son works for Omaha Public Schools, so. Anyway, my question is just coming. I am trying to figure out, I have looked at my, my maps at home that I have of lots and which lot is what, and trying to figure out where lot one is, where this is, what exactly this is going to entail. When, I'm trying to figure out what it all means when you're talking about moving it from an, you know, an M H to a B G H to a RG eight, and I am very confused. I am assuming, and I hate to do that, that what you are talking about is on, I'm going to say, the east part of Nebraska Drive and not the west part of Nebraska Drive. I'm just trying to figure out where it all is.
Let me have our planning manager there explain the M H and what the zones are. But you got, you got the note, anytime we change a zoning, somebody within the three hundred feet is going to get a letter stating that they're changing the zoning. And I'll let Ms. Palm explain.
Sure. So, currently, there are several parcels in play that the school is looking at. What they're looking at doing, and those are shown up there on that zoning map. So, you can see currently, the school's property is outlined in blue. There are several parcels there encompassed within that site. And there's currently three different zonings there. So, what the school is trying to do is rezone it all to what we call an RG eight, which is a residential district, which would facilitate the development of the school with a conditional use permit with city council approval. So, that's why you're being noticed as a property owner because it is a rezoning and it is a conditional use permit request. But that, that rezoning will help them facilitate the construction of the school.
There, you know, I mean, a couple of neighbors had had questions regarding, they weren't sure. I thought that one was across, across the street. So, then they were asking questions about what I would say is on the west side of Nebraska Drive where you have that field. So, because currently, you know, now it's not a field anymore because it's a lot of dirt across the street. And so, there was a lot of questions coming from what was going to happen. You know, was it going to affect the field on the other side of Nebraska Drive that butts up against the actual houses?
No. Everything that the school is doing is on the east side of Nebraska Drive.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what I thought. But I can go back and, you know, bring the information and settle people who were a little unsettled.
And if anybody has questions, they can call the planning department. Our phone number is on the letter, and so we encourage people, if they have any questions or concerns, to let us know.
So, I appreciate your time in answering the questions so that I can take the information back.
Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Hahn. I'm from one-three-four-three, South Seventy-Fifth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the applicant. And, and the, representing the architectural firm that designed the project. I think it's probably appropriate that we spend just a little bit of time, if we could look at the site plan, bring that up, Tammy, of the, of the school, of the project. Sorry, who has the ability to do that? There we go. I wanted to see the actual drawing that shows the site plan that we had submitted. I think you're getting it. That's, that should, that would work there. So, there has been some discussion about bus routing and where the buses would come in and so forth. So, what we have designed here is a way for the buses to come in and out of Nebraska Drive, which is the street over on the west of the property. And they could come down Child's Road and enter a driveway that's down toward the east end of the site. And they would then drop the children off into the area that's over on that east side of the site. And the buses are stacked in a safe manner down there, and we have the children coming out of the school. The buses would then leave and come back out, get on Child's Road, go up to Nebraska Drive, and then go north and up toward Chandler Road. So, that is the path that we have, we have worked with the school district to get those buses to be routed. And so, we're trying very hard to avoid having to have any issues with any buses that would be having to go down toward the railroad tracks and toward, toward Fort Crook Road.
Do you want to touch on the, just while you're up there, the bus service for the children, just so they're not crossing Fort Crook?
Right. So, there is an attendance area that is for this school that's going to be on both sides of Fort Crook Road. The students that are on the west side of Fort Crook Road, if they're within a mile of the school, they would be asked to walk to school, and we do have sidewalks and good pathways for them to come from that direction. Actually, the front of the school faces toward Nebraska Drive. That's the way they would come in. They would come into that west side of the school on Nebraska Drive. Any student that would be then on the east side of Fort Crook Road, even though they may be within the one-mile walk zone, will, will be required to ride the bus instead of walking across Fort Crook Road. So, one hundred percent of the children on the east side of Fort Crook Road would be bused to the school.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Christine Jurgens. I'm at twenty-two forty Greg Road in Bellevue. And I am talking in support of the school being built. I know our planning commission has had some issues about the safety of this being built where it's at. And I believe Omaha Public Schools has done everything they can to address it. And I think it would be hypocritical for our planning commission and for the city council to not move this forward. Based on a few things, currently where I live is approximately Twenty-Fifth and Cornhusker. And I am affected, we talk about stacking bus traffic. So, where I live, every morning, if I leave approximately the same time that Bellevue West, which is on the other side of the interstate from me, is entering school time, buses are stacked up across the interstate to in front of Menards. We're looking at approximately four or five, four, maybe four blocks. So, you're looking at maybe ten to twelve buses turning into one of only two entrances. So, there's safety concerns there in an already crowded area. And so, and then also, another thing, we have apartments that I believe planning commission in this council approved, which will be south of Walmart. Any high school-age students that live there are not going to be bused. They'll have to walk across what I think one of the busiest as far as accident intersections in the city. I don't know if that's correct, that Fifteenth and Cornhusker. They'll have to walk across that. Additionally, another of the entrances off of Fort Crook by the railroad tracks is one that, is the other entrance for Bellevue West. So, what I'm saying is, when our own school district and our own city hasn't addressed the safety issues and we still have our schools going, I think we need to be good stewards. This school, I think, will also help address safety issues for some of the students who currently live, and I think it's, is it Chandler Point or South Point Pavilion there, who go there, have to walk across two interstate exit entrance ramps to Chandler View. That would probably be routed over to this new school, too. So, I strongly am suggesting that it would be a great idea to get this school, get this school going, support education, anchor that neighborhood. And again, going back to the gentleman who spoke previously, I think it would be just the one thing that would start that redevelopment of Fort Crook also. Thank you.
Thank you. I got no room. There's another pad on the table there.
Yeah, I got it.
I'm a little smarter, man.
All right. My name's Art Childers, and I live at eighty-three-ten South Ninth Street. That is right on the corner of Ninth and Child's Road. I'm just, this first sec, the second house, well, actually, the first house on Ninth Street. I don't have a real problem with the school itself. What I do have a problem with is that I brought this up to the city council, I mean, to the planning board, and I think I sent you all letters too about this. That, I worked for the railroad, and I did the signal department stuff. That's what I did for life, for thirty-eight years. And when you put children by the railroad, I say children, elementary, you are creating a problem, a very bad one. Two with this problem is that, yeah, they're going to bust the kids. What happens? The kids miss the bus, and that just lives right behind the South Road. Guess what they're going to do? They're going to walk to school. They can't because it's close. It ain't that far. And they'll walk to school. They'll go across a, a six-lane highway, road, with no protection for them at all. And who's going to be responsible to fix that protection? Us, the city. Because OPS doesn't want to contend with that at all. And OPS doesn't want to contend with putting the sidewalk from, from the six-lane up Child's Road to the entrance of the school. They don't want to do that either. All they're doing is going to pass the buck to us, the taxpayers, and the safety of the kids. I tell you what, we're going to be hurt real bad if a kid gets hurt, killed, or whatever. One just happened here in Papillion at a crosswalk. Okay? So, we, as city council, you've got to look at this, make sure that you do everything right. Okay? And that's what I'm talking about. Rerouting the buses, putting buses on Child's Road is not an option. Because this is where we have traffic jams at just a stop sign, trying to get out onto Child's Road because of the car dealerships and everything else we have south of us. Okay? We have big trucks going down a five-ton road, semis. We can't get in the forest. Our, our, our streets through there are gravel roads asphalted on. Okay? Our sewer system, same way. Our sewer system's been punched through several times already. And you're going to create more traffic, which we don't, we have a speed limit twenty-five in front of my house. Guess what? That don't work. That don't work at all. I got police officers, and he, he knows too that, that, you know, they'll, they'll try to get some of them, but they can't get them all. And they can't get, they, they don't really enforce the five-ton rule. And the other thing is the kids. Now, another thing, you're going to take buses, now you're going to move them on Child's Road, go down Nebraska Drive, get in there by, by Woodhouse. How are they going to get out without putting traffic lights at it, out at that section? Again, that'll be charged to the city, again, to the taxpayers. Well, guess what? They've got to go down Chandler Road to the railroad crossings. Again, that does not have a pre-amp in it. That means they can't clear the signals out when, 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 when a train comes. Trains do stop on that track. There's no, and I think I say one, one city councilman told. There's no, and I think I see one, one city councilman told me, oh, you only run one or two trains a day. Wrong. There's at least ten trains a day and over seventy a week. And I tell you what, at forty-nine miles an hour, made, I mean, excuse me, forty-five miles, they don't stop on a dime. So this is the part that I wish OPS would recognize and do a better job through that part of making, if, if they're gonna build a school there, you know, I guess they have the right to because the state gives them that, but I think they should look at it a little bit more and make sure we're protected with kids and just busing them around. You're still going across the railroad tracks and what are you gonna do for the late, how about if a kid wants to stay late at school? He misses his bus, he gotta walk home, cross the tracks, cross the highway. So I, I really want you guys to look at that and, sorry, I feel like I'm fired up.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Brian Hinson, two-seven-zero-four Georgia Avenue. I tend to agree with the planning commission on their recommendation for this, this project and the previous speaker spoke about the railroad. And I think one of the things that troubles me about it most is things do break and you have, this, this is, sets us, sets Bellevue up for a real catastrophe. If you have a derailment of hazardous materials or just a derailment in general, I mean, I, when I stop at those crossings, I stop far enough back where if one of those cars jumps the track, hopefully it's not gonna take me out, my subcompact car and, and be, be a number to look at. I was guessing they run about fifty miles an hour. He said forty-nine, so I defer to him, but they're moving through there and stuff. And again, they're not able to stop. Child's Road is a treacherous road, especially in the winter. I mean, I know the streets department and those folks get out and sand and salt it, but there's always a question when you're going downhill there, whether you're able to stop or somebody's gonna plow into you from behind and stuff. So I just, I think more, more research is needed. And I tend to agree with the planning commission at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number three-nine-eight-zero or any items under twelve E? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Han, I might have a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Logan. I talked to her on the phone. I believe she probably met with everyone or talked to them on the phone and I appreciate her taking the time out of her busy day to do that. But my concerns are some that were recently expressed and I want to go over some of these and get your input. The City of Bellevue for recreational sports has, I, I want to say a policy, but I definitely they've have history. When they put together recreational sports, the baseball, the basketball and stuff throughout the City of Bellevue, they try to congregate kids that go to the same school on the same team so they're familiar with the kids. I personally coached my kids through that period. It was the elementary age period, baseball, basketball. We used the elementary school for basketball practice. We used the backside of it, there was a baseball diamond, we used that for baseball practice. That was all in the evening. And so that kids could walk there. They could come to practice, walk, ride a bike. A few parents would bring their kids to, to those practices. We have boy scouts and girl scouts that meet at our schools that are after school. A lot of those kids are walking and riding bikes. I can tell you, I lived from the elementary school my kids went to, we were probably two to three blocks away. We always went up there with my kids and there was always kids up there playing, Saturday, Sunday, all the time. If a kid is sick, mom and dad are off to work, kid wakes up, ten, eleven o'clock, he needs to get to school, he's not gonna pick up the phone and say, send someone over here to pick me up. My concern is, I went to sarpycounty.com, brought up the aerial view, and if you're standing on the east side of Fort Crook, say thirty, forty feet off, off from the curb and got maybe thirty, forty feet west of the railroad tracks, you're talking about a four-hundred-foot trip plus another two-hundred-foot trip to get to the entrance that is, exists today. Now, I don't know if your drawing uses that same entrance or not. And my concern is, well, let me back up. I talked to someone on the planning commission and they mentioned that what they were told at one of the meetings was eight to nine trains, on average, would pass that school during a school day. So I guess my concern here is this, if we get a kid that gets hurt, everybody will point the finger at the city and say, how are you gonna fix this? It's gonna become our issue. Now, also, I have a problem with the buses. I think you're gonna shoot them through Nebraska Avenue, which will go through a residential neighborhood to get all the way out to Chandler Road, which again, you're gonna go back, as the gentleman said, you're gonna go back to the railroad tracks. I, I just think, I just think we're just setting ourselves up for a catastrophe. And also, Child's Road is a southern border of the school district. If you go across the street to the south, it's my understanding you'd be in Bellevue Public Schools.
That's correct.
So, you know, to me, a school should be where kids three-sixty around it could come to it. It's easier to walk. If I live three or four blocks away from a school where I got a three-sixty to get to it, I'm going to see a lot more kids walking and riding bikes and maybe walking with a mom and dad. We're talking about kids that are in kindergarten, five years old, and we're talking about kids, and I don't know if OPS, I know Bellevue sixth graders are still in elementary, I don't know about OPS.
These are sixth graders.
Eleven years old. So we're gonna have nine, ten, eleven, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven-year-old kids that could, could potentially sit there at ten o'clock or four o'clock, if there's an after-school event, trying to negotiate to get on the other side of Fort Crook Road. How do we address that?
Well, architecturally, you know, we don't design things off, off the site of the project. We're worried about how we're gonna be able to make the project work the best that it possibly can in the safest way that we possibly can make it work. The, the conditions at Fort Crook Road have existed for many years. It, it wasn't my choice to, to select this piece of land. We were hired to design a school on this piece of land.
Sure.
So I don't have an answer for how you can make this, the crossing of Fort Crook Road safe. In fact, we had a meeting at the request of the planning commission with the folks from, you know, Public Works, and I believe Mr. Roberts was part of that meeting. I was not in that meeting, but our team and our traffic engineer, who's with us today, met with your own folks and came away from that meeting with the recommendation that we do not try to come up with any kind of a way of trying to, to create a crosswalk at Fort Crook Road, just because of the, of the extreme difficulty it would be of trying to get across that street. So what we've done, we've done everything we possibly can to make it so that there are ways to get to that school that don't require children to cross that street.
And I, I appreciate that, but that's after the selection of a site was made. Okay? I, I would say, let's jump ahead of that or let's go backwards and let's talk about maybe the selection of another site.
If you want to talk about a site selection, you'd probably need to speak to somebody from OPS.
No, 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 I, I'm not, I'm not. Here's where I'm having a problem. I'm trying to look at a kid. It gets darker now this time of year. I'm trying to look at a kid in rain, snow, and just normal temperatures, sitting across the street, I think it's called Firestone. If you go up to Camp Gifford Road, which I think would attract more kids because again, Child's Road north is your boundary until you get to twenty-fifth Street. So you're, you're talking, you're gonna add another fifty to a hundred feet if they cross that Camp Gifford to try to get across the two roads, there's a lot more medium and railroad to get up to the school. And then we got buses. I was told from a planning commission member that the school will be built for about six-hundred or start with six-hundred or the max six-hundred, and about two-hundred of those kids could come on the east side of Fort Crook. Now, I'm assuming that's, now we're gonna run seven, eight, nine, ten buses. You're gonna run them up Nebraska Avenue through residential neighborhood until you get out to the car lots. Then we have issues of getting on a Chandler Road, we got an issue of getting across the railroad tracks. Again, I, I, I'm concerned about this because I, you got two policemen here and I could tell you, a lot of times, being on the street during the daytime, I saw these kids, they're half hour, they're an hour, there's three hours, they're late, and they're maneuvering their way to school, throwing rocks, kicking balls, and taking their time. And now they have to negotiate crossing this area.
Okay, well, if you want, I think we should probably hear from someone from Omaha Public Schools if you want to discuss the location of the school and the selection of the site for the school. Okay?
Members of the council, my name is David Kramer, K-R-A-M-E-R. I'm an attorney for the Omaha Public Schools outside council, the firm of Barrett Home. I've been involved in this process for longer than the superintendent and a number of the other folks who are here and was involved in the initial, assisting the board as they went through the initial site selection process. The board did consider five separate sites. One of the primary considerations that we went through was trying to avoid having to displace people from their homes, which might have created a much larger crowd here tonight and certainly at our meetings. We are an urban school district, including an urban part of Bellevue. The options that we have available to us are relatively limited. If you look at the locations, and I think on, on, on one of the slides, you can see where all of the different OPS schools are located within the district. We tried to balance, one of the concerns you referenced, Mr. Cook, of, of, of trying to have it so that people from all around could come, but there aren't that many options available without having to resort to potentially displacing for as many acres as we need, anywhere from twenty to forty individual homeowners. The two sites that, that are across the street from each other that presented actually very good opportunities for the district and for, we think, everyone involved, where the site that ultimately was selected and the Sears site presented the same problem with respect to the, the student attendance zones, that, that students from, no, no matter which side of the, of, of the road you located the school on, they were gonna have to have some students transported across the, the, the street a, as a result of the busy road. What I will tell you is there is almost no location anymore that we could select that wouldn't impact the neighborhood based on the busing, impact traffic into a major artery because our buses need to get out onto major arteries, that, that wouldn't result in some of the same significant problems that we are trying to address at this site. What I can say to you is, throughout this entire process, safety of the students has been the number one concern. And we've tried to work with the planning commission and with the department to try and address those concerns. I think Mr. Han mentioned that, that, and, and there was extensive discussion at the planning commission about the construction of a, of a, of a crosswalk and crossing at the, at the railroad tracks and across Fort Crook Road. And that the, the folks in the planning department and others all agreed that, that just didn't make sense because it would incent students. Dr. Sturba, who's a former principal and the chief operations officer, indicated that one of the things that, that, that we would be able to do for students who missed the bus, for example, is that we would afford them and their parents the opportunity to contact the school. And on, on many occasions, we've picked up, we, we, we've picked kids up. We, we do everything we can to, to provide a safe location and a safe environment for the students.
Sure. I, but let's, let's just say the school at twenty-fifth and Chandler, Chandler Elementary School, I don't know what the name of it is.
Chandler View.
Chandler View. I think the fact that they're at twenty-six, twenty-fifth Street, I think it would be, I don't think kids that young would say, hey, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna go another half mile to try to walk. So I think, I think you would reduce, I'd like to see none, but I think you would reduce the opportunity of a kid maybe trying to wander across that street if he knew he had to walk another six, seven blocks up to twenty-fifth Street. Why not take twenty Chandler View and say that'll take all the kids across on the east side of Fort Crook because they're likely, I mean, if I gotta walk two blocks or maybe a mile, I'm probably gonna take that mile trip and say, I'm not going to school today. So I would imagine today, the kids on the east side of Fort Crook go to Chandler View Elementary. Why not let them kids continue to do that, bus as many as you can, as frequently as you can, and say, we're gonna have to redo some of these districts, but let's build the school maybe by thirty-six or forty-eight. Once you get to twenty-fifth Street, you guys from Giles, you go southbound to Cornhusker, you go across Cornhusker, now, I don't know how far, but I'm gonna say, at least in the city limits of Bellevue, there's still a lot of stuff down there that has not even been built and it would probably require another school district someday. So why not just say, our school district, Chandler View, is gonna stay, take the kids on the east side of Fort Crook plus some others, because I think we would greatly reduce the amount of kids that would say, I'm gonna walk another seven, eight blocks to get up to Chandler View, and then build a school farther west and start moving those kids to get to that school.
Can I, can I address that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so first of all, that still doesn't address the fact that the kids who are on the east side of Fort Crook would want to cross.
But they're today, they're today, they're going to that school and we haven't had an issue. What I'm telling you is, if I gotta go, if I'm a, a seven-year-old kid and I gotta go two blocks to a candy store, I'm probably gonna walk it. If I go, had to go ten blocks, I'm probably not gonna walk it.
So we, we understand and appreciate that, but we, we have, we have, how many elementary schools?
Sixty.
Sixty, sixty-four elementary schools. And it is a, it is a domino effect that you move. If you move, every block that we move the line has ripple, ripple effects across the entire district. And when, and as you, as you, as you indicated, which is true, this facility is being built right on the edge of the district. So any movement we make means movement and, and ripple effects all the way across our district. And so we're trying to balance that, provide, because we, we also know, and, and our research department spends a great deal of time analyzing the kids, what age the kids are, what our likely future population is gonna be at the school. And we're, we're projecting where the need is for a school. And we identified in two thousand and thirteen that there was gonna be a need here in Bellevue and that it needed to be in this part of the city. And while we can argue over whether, whether your opinion there's a better site or, or some, another, a, a council member's opinion has a different site, ultimately, that was a decision that the school board made, taking into consideration all the factors that Dr. Logan talked about.
Sure.
And I don't know that there's a perfect site.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have a domino effect anyway. You're building a school. So why not every kid east of Chandler View goes to Chandler View and a new school is built farther west to accommodate more kids and future development?
Because we have, we have already, this school will alleviate crowding, not just on the west side, but it will also alleviate crowding on the east side. And, and if we move that, it impacts all of those other schools. So those are balances that the school board tried to strike. I can tell you, boundaries, boundary decisions, as I'm sure you're aware, for school districts, our, school boundary decisions generate huge crowds of people. And we've just done that because we've got two new high schools, we've got two new, we've got a new middle school, new elementary schools. It's a puzzle that we're trying to manage as effectively as possible to, to, to make as many people as possible happy.
It is my opinion that what has been happening for the last probably twenty, thirty, forty-plus years, you used to have a school on the east side of Fort Crook that you gave up and sold.
Yeah.
It would be much smaller. Chandler View has probably been working since it was built, taken over those kids. I'm just saying is, you're building a school on the farthest southern boundary, across the street is Bellevue. I think for safety reasons, this is not a good location for a school. I think also for the fact of building on a boundary between two school districts is not a wise decision. If I come in here and I say I wanna be in, I'm, I'm in the City of Bellevue, it already, it already is there northwest of Bellevue, Brian, Middle School, and your four elementary If I come in here and I say, I want to be in, I'm I'm in the city of Bellevue, it already, it already is there northwest of Bellevue, Brian Middle School and your four elementary schools. I know it's already there, but we do have conflict with people at times. We have a housing development out on three seventy, people would move in, think they might be in this school district or that school district. And they want to be in this one, they find out they're in the other one. But my main issue is safety. My second issue is I don't think you should build right next to a boundary. And I still think, leave it alone, it's not, we're not having issues today, build a school further west and make the boundaries different.
We we make decisions, we have to make decisions, not about what's happening today, but what we anticipate is going to be the situation five years from now, ten years from now. Because if we wait until there's a need, the kids in those schools will suffer dramatically. Because they're all right, we're eliminating, I think, eighteen portable, did you want to? Well, I'm going to step back this for obvious reasons.
We actually already have the issue. The schools in the southern part of our district are all overcrowded. There are almost two thousand children at Brian High School. There are nine hundred children at Brian Middle School. Chandler View has several portables, there is no room at Chandler View for for us to add any young people. And as we look at our birth rates, which we can see five years out, obviously with the with kindergarten starting at age five. We see the need to have schools today. The delay has already caused this school to move from a twenty one, twenty two opening to a twenty two, twenty three opening. Initially, we were going to open a school in that year. We will now open four schools in one year, which is obviously a tremendous, will be a lot of change for the entire southern part of our district. But the the fact of the matter is that all of the schools are overcrowded.
Sure.
And young people deserve to be inside of buildings and not in portables. And the solution that you pose would require them to stay outside, to have, they travel right now outside of their school. During the school day, they have to come in for specials, special subjects, and they have to come in for lunch. And so there's already a hardship that's being placed on those young people and I think, just think they deserve better. Thank you.
All right, just two more quick comments. Number one is there was comments about other locations in the city. And I've lived in the city almost sixty years and a lot of those schools were probably built before a roadway was a four lane or a divided four lane. I can remember Galvin Road and Fort Crook is two lanes. So there was a two lane road and maybe an Avery Elementary School was built. And then, you know, a block away, a two lane Fort Crook Road goes to a four lane, goes to a six lane, goes to turning lane. So you know, some of the things, schools have been built. And I have a little bit of, you know, kids in high school, I think, can negotiate streets and traffic signals and crosswalks. Better than kids in elementary school. And one final note is, I spent a career with the Omaha Police Department and I spent a lot of time in OPS schools. We had monthly meetings at times with my job assignment as a lieutenant and captain. I went to monthly meetings with OPS schools for several, several years. And I will tell you, I never experienced anything but professionalism, kindness and care for kids. It's a great school district and this is nothing negative towards OPS, my discussion today, because they're outstanding. I, there was a lot of times I thought I was spending too much time in OPS schools as a police officer, but it was all good. Unless, you know, something crazy happened, but that wasn't, that was out of the control of the school. But my hang up here is the location and the safety. And I I'm telling you, railroad tracks will track kids and six lanes of road that used to be a highway, turning lanes, four hundred feet to try to get across approximately. It's hard for me to visualize a young kid in third, fourth grade, younger or older, trying to negotiate that. Thank you.
Have a couple comments or question. Does the Omaha, does OPS at any of the schools have a daytime shuttle or something or for for kids that need rides or late?
To reiterate, to reiterate what Councilman Cook said, no, we don't have a shuttle, but we have a lot of caring staff. And often, we will make sure that kids get to school if they're, if they were unable to get there via their regular route.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one other thing, after listening to OPS and that, you know, I don't think they brought up the issue yet and and safety for the kids. I don't care, they're going to go across the highway. And the other part, the other road, Camp Brewster Road, is that going to be blocked off on the south, on the north end that they can't get into the school property?
Any, any other, anybody else wishing to speak?
I have a couple of questions for them.
For the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for more comments, questions from the council and Bree, I'll start with you.
I just have a couple of questions and I don't know if it's for the superintendent or Mr. Kramer, the attorneys. I'm just going to pose the question and whoever wants to answer it, that's fine. I guess my first question is, is, I think you said that you have about sixty four schools, is that correct?
Yes, correct, elementary schools.
Elementary school, okay, wow, that's a lot. And those are positioned all over Omaha. You have some on busy roads such as like Forty Second and I eighty where traffic is coming in and on those ramps, correct? You have crosswalks, streetlights, similar situations all across the city, correct? Okay. Even in those, when you take every safety precaution possible and you have streetlights and you have crosswalks, there's still accidents that happen, is that correct?
There, that's correct.
Okay, there are busy roads that kids have to cross, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I feel like you're on trial, sorry, I didn't mean that.
Oh, no, no, that's okay, that's all right. I didn't raise my right hand, but I will tell the truth.
Mr. Kramer was laughing back there, so. So it's safe to say that it it could happen anywhere. We can sit and we can think about trains derailing and we can think about kids having accidents, but that can happen no matter what safety precautions are taken, correct?
It's correct. I think that the the thing that we have to do, the 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 most important thing we have to do is to make sure that we are always revisiting safety precautions for our young people. High schoolers actually are, actually take more risks. So as a former high school principal and a former elementary school principal, I can tell you that high schoolers take more risks than elementary students because of supervision. One, there's a, there's less supervision of high schoolers, obviously, with high schoolers traveling by themselves mostly. And elementary students almost always traveling with their parents. Obviously, there are times when they don't, but for the most part, yes.
And if concerns, if the city council passes us and concerns are presented to OPS or that school that maybe there are a large number that are still walking across the street. That maybe you're not anticipating now with the busing system, is that something that you are continually willing to work on to alleviate any of those concerns if it actually is a concern in the future?
We always, we are, yes, yes, we do. And we are constantly revisiting safety protocols. We receive concerns from parents, we see, receive concerns from citizens around safety issues. And when we need to revisit those or help young people, I'm thinking of Northwest Radio Highway where it's a very busy street. We have a lot of schools along that corridor where we have to revisit safety with our with our young people. Even though there's an overpass there, young people don't necessarily take that. So we have to constantly revisit that with our young people.
And it's safe to assume that, I think you've already said it probably a hundred times, but safety is OPS in your biggest priority, correct?
It absolutely is. And to, for for folks to suggest that we haven't thought, thought that, thought about that is disappointing. Because we absolutely have thought about safety and have worked hard to be a good partner with the planning commission and obviously with the city of Bellevue. As we work through some of the challenges or some of the things that have been brought up to make sure that we make a pledge to bus our students from one side of the road to the other. That is something that we, you know, we want to be a good partner and we are listening to the concerns and not just listening, but taking action around those.
And you've done that by modifying the conditional use permit. And do you feel comfortable standing here that you've done everything to account for the safety and that you'll continually listen to those concerns in the future and and correct anything?
I absolutely do.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for putting you on trial.
That's okay, that's all right, thank you.
I just, I want to make a comment, you know, just, Fort Creek Road is a dinosaur. Fort Creek Road is the problem, it's not the school. That road's way too wide. The Fort Creek Road plan we're talking about takes it down to a four lane boulevard, which makes more connectivity. So if that ever happens, that resolves most of your problems. So they're working around a problem that Bellevue has and that's Fort Creek Road. I don't, I I would suggest putting up no pedestrian crossing at that sign. I hate doing that because we're all about connectivity. But if we're worried about kids, put no, no, put no pedestrians crossing there. Because there's still kids crossing, I'll see one every once in a while crossing it. So anyway, that's my thought on that. Well, I mean, we took the bike lanes out because it's unsafe. I mean, that Fort Creek is a problem, it's, it's a big problem for Bellevue and it needs to be addressed. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I thank everybody for their input. We certainly have been listening. And I too want to compliment OPS because I think the Urban Ag program at Brian Senior High, I think the Boys and Girls Club at Brian Junior. That are here in Bellevue are wonderful programs and the school and the quality of education are very good. So we, we can all agree on that. This site may not be optimum and we can probably all agree on that. But there are not any easily selected sites, as we heard from Mr. Kramer earlier. It's a tough road to hoe, it's not easy. And we've got kids that are not optimally being educated because of conditions and portable classrooms and overcrowding with too many kids in the schools. I don't see any other good sites, even if we tried, we would be displacing people. The size of the site, the conditions are going to be very, very difficult to find any other site. And on this one, safety is a concern, we've all agreed on that too. But Fort Creek Road, in five years, we're hoping is going to be a very different road. And it has been reconfigured in terms of what the city is looking at, what the chamber is looking at, and it's getting more emphasis. I, I think that kids are going to be kids and we always have to be vigilant. I won't downplay safety at all. But we're going to have to have kids school and situations where we minimize it. And in this case, I think we're doing and OPS is doing as best they can. I want to differentiate unless somebody else has something to say and they could still too. But we've got two items before us and most of the discussion is on the second one. The first one is simply a rezoning. And we've merged the two in discussion, which is fine and it saves time. But what's before us first is the rezoning and taking this property from three different, I believe, zoning categories. And merging it into one contiguous site with one zoning. Now, that shouldn't be controversial in and of itself and I didn't hear one person speak against that. The concern has been safety. So having said that, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and we vote tonight on the rezoning. As I stated I would at the beginning of the hearing, on the rezoning. Not talking about the conditional use permit, I'm just simply talking about making contiguous or uniform zoning on this site. Somebody else buys it or somebody else wants to do something, I don't think it's going to happen, but even if OPS sold it and moved to someplace else. The buildings are being demolished, the site is being graded, it still makes sense to zone everything the same. So my motion is to suspend the rules and to vote on the rezoning at this time.
And you're talking about ordinance number three nine eight zero?
Yes.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Preister made the motion to approve and suspend the.
To suspend the rules would be the motion and then to vote on it tonight. So the first vote would be to suspend the rules.
Okay, so motion to suspend the rules for the third reading. Correct. Have the third read and have the third reading tonight and Welch seconded. Yeah, any discussion on that? Councilman Stinson.
For one, I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm against taking the vote tonight. I'm still on the fence on this a little bit and I wanted to come here tonight and listen to the people talk. And then I want time to think about what they've said, some of their concerns and stuff before I take any type of votes. So I would not like to have this vote tonight.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. So as I understand Mr. Preister's motion, it would be, well, a motion is on third reading, which we would need a vote on first to proceed. But it would just be on ordinance three nine eight oh, which is just the rezoning. It has nothing to do with the conditional use permit and whether or not they can build the school and and do all the things that we talked about tonight. It's just the rezoning and taking the zoning on the blue line that was up there, that was divided into three different zoning districts and making it just RG eight. Did I say that correctly, RG eight? So that that one is just one zoning. Additionally, I was talking to Ms. Palm and twelve E two is a replat of that. And that it's kind of in conjunction, so it would make sense to have a vote on both of those. If you did that and then you left twelve E one on the table for future consideration, whether that's, you know, next meeting or so forth. That's the one where it's the conditional use permit and whether or not they can build the school. So they're kind of two separate issues, I don't know if that helps clarify anything, Councilman Stinson.
Well, the one thing I have is the RG eight makes, the way it is now, they can build on the RG eight currently. If we make the whole plat RG eight tonight, then they could build without the permission of the city council.
I don't think that's correct and Ms. Tom, Ms. Palm can correct me if I'm wrong, but even under RG eight, they still have to have a conditional use permit under the zoning ordinances. So just because you make it RG eight doesn't mean that you're automatically granting the authority.
That's correct.
My, my issue is why change the zoning tonight? What, what if, what if the conditional use permit doesn't pass and we don't want this zoning for maybe some other type of development?
Right, and that's up to you guys to decide that.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, I mean, I don't know if Tammy or someone wants to. I didn't come here tonight to vote, I'll be honest with you. I mean, a lot of times we have a statement on here so that the public can see that there's going to be a recommendation to waive something and I don't see this. So I, I, I'm, if, 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 I'm just going to throw out an if, if the conditional use permit doesn't pass, then why change the zoning? And if someone else comes here tomorrow and wants to do something under BGH on that property, well, I know there's another owner, but would that occur? Could that occur?
Well, I think Tammy, again, she's kind of the expert in this, but currently OPS owns all three parcels there. So in twelve E two, the replat would be replating that into one parcel instead of having it be three different parcels, correct?
Correct.
And so they currently own that, so I think we would need to look at replating it regardless of what it is. But in order to replat it, my understanding is it has to be the same zoning.
It doesn't necessarily have to be the same zone for them to do a replat, but it's much cleaner. Personally, from the planning perspective, we wouldn't want to have one lot with three different zonings on it. It'd be preferential to have one zoning, one lot.
But we can come back to the next meeting and vote on this.
Correct.
And get done. What is the building next to it, the what used to be the Pendleton Wall Mills or something, I'm not sure, what is that zone?
I believe that's MH, that's correct, that's MH, so.
That's right next to it, which is already MH.
You have RG eight, that's adjacent to it, to the north and to the west. And then you have. And then you have a pocket of BGH, and then you have the MH along Fort Cook Road.
Well, I, I, I guess my feeling is, is what does this accomplish by taking out a piece or two and voting tonight versus voting all on it in two weeks?
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. My whole purpose was to help show OPS that we're not so difficult to deal with in Bellevue. They've already gone to, I misspoke originally, I said two public hearings before the Planning Commission. It was actually three, I attended the second one, and then it was laid over another month. It's the end of the construction season. I'm just trying to show some good faith here, that we respect the district, that we respect that they know enough and are taking enough precautions for the students. They're the professionals, they understand railroad tracks and interstate crossings and a whole lot of other things, and we're showing some respect. I'm getting feedback that that's not the wish of this body, so, Mayor, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion's withdrawn.
Mr. Mayor?
You'll draw your second?
I'll withdraw my second, but I want to make a comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank Dr. Logan and, um, Mr. Han for meeting with us to be able to talk about what your, what your, uh, what your plans are. And obviously, Mr. Kramer, Dr. Logan, you know, your first, as you mentioned, your first priority is safety, and it wasn't like you just said, "Let's just throw a dart and find a place and then run into all this controversy." You know, your concerns are our concerns, and it's a matter of, uh, working with a partnership to make sure, obviously, the children are safe, the, the school situations are, there's enough room for all the kids to get a really good education, and to make this a win-win for all of us. And I just want you to know that we're here because we have the same concerns that you do, and we're gonna do everything we, at least, I'm gonna speak for myself, do everything we can to make this a win-win for both of us. Now, there's no way that we can guarantee that every kid is never gonna miss a bus, and every kid is never going to say, "I'll, I'll, I'll be careful when the trains..." I mean, kids are curious, kids are mysterious, and sometimes accidents do happen, but we're gonna do everything we can to, um, ensure the safety of the children, and that is the mission of all of us, I think, together. But thank you for your time.
One more question for probably Mr. Kramer. You would not have a problem if there was no pedestrian signs at that intersection?
Absolutely, we would, we would respect that. One of the things we did share at the Planning Commission, that, that will be a big part of this, for a long time, we'll be educating not only our students, but the parents, about what our hope and expectation is gonna be with respect to, to Fort Cook Road. And if some of the, the plans that have been discussed come to fruition, we will be very excited to be a part of, uh, becoming one of the anchor tenants for that, the, the, the future of, of Fort Cook Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Public hearing was closed, third reading and vote will occur November 19th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for your input. 12E1, approval of conditional use permit for Lot 1, Southwoods replat, no action required at this time. We have talked about that. Item, uh, 12E2, approval of small subdivision plat, Lot 1, Southwoods replat 3, no action required at this time. Moves us to number 13, ordinances for introduction, first reading. 13A, ordinance number 3981, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to recent annexations. Susan, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Section 9-3 of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised City Council ward boundaries, to repeal Section 9-3 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be November 19th, 2019 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Item 13B, ordinance number 3982, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3965 to authorize the refunding of additional bonds. Susan, could you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance, the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, amending ordinance number 3965 to authorize refunding of additional bonds, which are obligations of the city, and increase the stated principal amount of the bonds to not exceed $36,500,000. General obligation refunding bond, Series 2019 of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, and amending certain perimeters for such bonds, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Councilman Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we, uh, use the tool, suspend the rule, and hold the public hearing and vote on this item tonight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, to suspend the rules and vote on ordinance number 3982 this evening. That will be after a public hearing. Yeah, hold on. Okay, there's been a, there's been a, I'm just gonna follow the transcript here. There's been a vote to suspend the rules and to hold the public hearing tonight and vote.
We have to have a vote on the suspension of the rules.
Okay. So, vote on the suspension of the rules, please.
It's been a long day.
For you.
Is Mr. Preister in here? Yours is spinning, Mr. Shannon? Yours is? I've got Mr. Shannon without a vote right now.
I haven't had the whole window come up.
Really? Do you want to just vote? Yes, okay. All voting yes?
Thank you. There has been a vote to suspend the rules, to hold the public hearing tonight and vote. At this time, I will open for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding ordinance number 3982? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, amending ordinance number 3965 to authorize refunding of additional bonds, which are obligations of the city, and increase the stated principal amount of the bonds to not exceed $36,500,000. General obligation refunding bond, Series 2019 of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, and amending certain perimeters for such bonds, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you, any discussion or questions from the council? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve ordinance number 3965, 16...
82.
3980.
Yeah, it's got the wrong number.
82.
3982.
3982.
I'll second that.
As just read.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch, to approve ordinance number 3982. Any further questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item 13C, ordinance number 3983, an ordinance authorizing refunding of convention center bonds. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the approval of refunding bonds for the Convention Center Project taxable Series 2019 of the Bellevue Municipal, Bellevue City Municipal Building Corporation in one or more series in an aggregate stated principal amount not to exceed $7 million. Authorizing approval of one or more bond purchase agreements, providing for the sale of the bonds to be, and, bonds to the underwriter, authorizing addenda to lease purchase agreement with the Bellevue City Municipal Building Corporation, authorizing the defeatsance and redemption of the corporation's building bonds for the Convention Center Project taxable Series 2016, authorizing the approval and execution of the documents with respect to said lease purchase agreement and bonds, and providing for the publishing of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Councilman Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we use the tool, suspend the rule, hold the public hearing, and vote on this item tonight.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns, to suspend the rules and have the public hearing and vote on ordinance number 3983 this evening. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. There has been a vote to suspend the rules and to hold the public hearing tonight and vote. At this time, I will open for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ordinance number 3983? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Susan, would you reread the ordinance for the council, please?
An ordinance authorizing the approval of refunding bonds for Convention Center Project taxable Series 2019 of the Bellevue City Municipal Building Corporation in one or more series in an aggregate stated principal amount not to exceed $7 million. Authorizing approval of one or bond purchase agreements, providing for the sale of the bonds to the underwriter, authorizing addenda to a lease purchase agreement with the Bellevue City Municipal Building Corporation, authorizing the defeatsance and redemption of the corporation's building bond, bonds for the Convention Center taxable Series 2016, authorizing the approval and execution of documents with respect to said lease purchase agreements and bonds, and providing for the publishing of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the council? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve ordinance number 3983 as just read.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns, to approve ordinance number 3983. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, item 14, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 14A, approve the request of the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation, Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, Marathon Ventures, and Salvation Army to hold the annual Salvation Army Big Red Kettle Kickoff Celebration with a firework display provided by Bellino Fireworks at 901 Fort Cook Road North on Friday, November 8th, 2019, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM with fireworks at 7:30 PM. Is there anyone? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the fireworks display? Or the event? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion to approve item 14A.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, 14B, approval of request to final plat lots 94 through 170, and Outlot B, Liberty for the Purpose of Single Family Residential Development, applicant Liberty Land LLC, general location Daniel Road and Chenault Street. And I will open it up for public hearing, and if the applicant's here, they waited a long time. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Coster with Thompson, Dresen, and Dorner, representing the, the developer for Liberty Phase 2. This is for a final plat, uh, 77 lots of residential homes and, and roughly in value around $400,000. It's in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat that was previously approved, and I'm here with the developer to answer any questions.
Okay, just hold on, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone here to speak for or against the development? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, Councilman Cook?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Oh. Let me ask. Councilman Shannon?
Where's the nearest park facility for this, these families?
As I understand it, there's a planned park, uh, in the master plan, but I'm not aware of what the nearest park is.
Okay, because we got Phase 1 and Phase 2 sitting here, and I, I don't see any park there.
Yeah, there's a park close by, can't remember where it's at, though.
Tammy?
The closest one is probably Lakewood Villages to the west. Mr. Coster is correct that when this development was preliminary platted, it was the city's plan in the master park plan to do some sort of park development on the city-owned property to the north of the Veterans Home.
When is, when is that coming?
That's dependent upon the city, but yes, that was the original plan, so at the time, the developer was not required to do a separate park in this development, so...
I keep hearing about future parks on this side of town and don't see any progress.
And again, we have it in the pa, in the master plan, so that is something that could be discussed with...
So, they're, uh, they're contributing to the park fund?
Absolutely, yes.
We need a park. Councilman Cook?
I did one comment, then I'll make a motion. There is a plan, we have a park committee now that was just put together by council member Burns. There was plans in our, in our city future...
Park master plan.
Park master plan. If you go up to that area, look where the blue is, and then you got the blue rectangle, and go northeast of that, that light brown spot somewhere up in there. Mr. Preister probably knows better than I, but that is for a future, and I think they were gonna take that road right under the blue rectangle. I think they were gonna take that road now. I don't know all the terrain there, but I think they were gonna take that road that runs to the west side of the Veterans Administration, uh, home, and, and somehow maybe loop that in that direction, maybe a parking lot or whatever. But also where that blue rectangle is, if you just go north, if you come south of that, north and south, there is, uh, power lines, and I'm not too sure, coming towards Cape Art Road. Someday, you might see some small soccer fields or just open fields. You know, so there's a lot of land that the city still owns, and there was planned for a future park. And I'm sure Mr. Burns's group will put that in their plans and present something down the road. So, I'll make a motion, we approve 14B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister, to approve 14B. Any comments, questions, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 14B1, approval of the Liberty Phase 2 subdivision agreement. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve fourteen B one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Um, moves us on to fifteen resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution number two zero one nine dash three eight. Approval, approve resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the municipal annual certification of program compliance for the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards for two thousand nineteen. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion we approve resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business. Sixteen A, approval of the memorandum of understanding and agreement with Pilgrim Landing Garden Club for the purpose of providing for the maintenance of the plantings in the public areas within the city rights away within the Pilgrim Landing subdivision, formerly S I D one eighty-three. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion we approve sixteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by second, or motion, motion by Stinson, second by Shannon. Any further comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen B, authorize the city attorney to initiate eminent domain proceedings for track C fourteen thirty-sixth Street, blind to Sheridan. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments, questions? Please vote. Oh, okay, sorry.
And Jeff may be able to chime in as well, but um, there has been conversations with property owners. It's going to be the same comment that I have on sixteen G as well. Um, they're, they're kinda connected. So there have been negotiations with the landowners. It's regarding the thirty-sixth street widening project. Um, it didn't, deals haven't went through, so the next step would be an eminent domain case in the county court. And I need authorization to file that if needed, if we can't get the deals finalized, um, to be able to take that next door, next step. Sorry, it's been a long night. That next step to county court, um, to ask the court for eminent domain on those, those properties.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve the proposal with Heim's Corp. for the thirty-sixth street emergency culvert repair not to exceed forty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve for sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve the acquisitions, permanent and temporary easements for the thirty-sixth street improvement project not to exceed sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion we approve sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, second by Cook. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve the memorandum of understanding restructuring the Bellevue Professional Management Association job classification due to reorganization in the planning department. Counsel. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a recommendation that we approve sixteen E.
Is that the same as a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, long night.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any questions, comments? Please vote. Oh, hold on.
Can we put up the chart that, that I asked for? I, I know that you guys had it up there somewhere. Okay, if someone can just kinda walk us through the restructuring of, uh, the planning department so that, uh, everyone understands what's going on, who works for who, uh, 'cause I got a lot of questions on, on this. And, uh, there was some confusion of terms and titles and, uh, just walk me through it, please.
Let me have a say things tonight. How about turn your mic on? Sure.
Okay, within this, the, uh, the intent here is we're creating a community development director position, which will oversee, as you see, the permits and inspection, planning, code enforcement, as well as our community, community relations and media coordinator. You know, one of the things that we've had is discussions with developers being more business friendly, putting all the pieces of the puzzle together so we can expedite things. Kinda cut through that pretty short, but within that, what we did is we eliminated the planning director position. While planning still exists, um, we'll have a planning manager that will report directly to the community development director. Can't have a director reporting to a director. So by eliminating the planning, planning department director, we created the planning manager, which now Ms. Palm is our planning manager. Up underneath Ms. Palm will be an assistant planning manager, which is already in place. And ultimately, a secretary that'll be up there to handle some of the administrative duties. So the planning director, Tammy will assume a large portion of the duties that were there. And then the community development director will take other pieces of that position, too, that was underneath planning director.
Just out of curiosity, does changing it from planning director to planning manager require rewriting all the planning ordinances?
Planning ordinances.
Yeah, things like for the planning commission and everything else, all the duties?
I don't think that would affect it at all, no.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna find the language.
Some of those things, we'll do some general cleanup as far as it's just like, but it's not gonna require like a.
Mr. Mayor.
Are you talking about like the general?
It says if you go to the planning director, it'll be the planning manager.
Were you talking about the, just like the terms, changing the term, the term from planning director to planning manager? Yeah, we can go through and look at all of that. I thought you meant like, um, duties and, and those sorts of things. Okay.
Doesn't that also help that it's, it's kinda like businesses, if they are having something stuck somewhere that that person, the community development director is like their go-to person?
Because you're one stop shop, yes.
Move things along, and they're the, they're the liaison between the, um, businesses that wanna come in and do business with Bellevue and these four different departments.
Yes, as well as cleaning up, like sometimes you have some disconnects between each one of these entities, so that'll also help streamline decision-making between those two, those multiple entities. Not yet. We're close.
Any further comments, comments, questions? Okay, uh, motion by Welch, second by Cook to approve sixteen E. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve the memorandum of understanding restructuring the Civilian Employees Association of Bellevue job classification due to reorganization in the planning department. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion to, make a, I'm tired, sorry. Make a motion to approve item sixteen F.
I'll second. Motion by Welch, second by Shannon. Any further questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, authorize the city attorney to initiate an eminent domain proceeding for tracks A ten, A thirty-nine, B twenty-one, and C eight, in the event timely responses are not received or an impasse is reached regarding the tracks. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve sixteen G.
Motion by Cook, second by Stinson. Comments or questions? Please vote.
Just wanna wake everybody up. It's an execution.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Sixteen H, approve and authorize the execution of the inner local agreement for the contribution and allocation of Omaha Public Power District payments in lieu of taxes. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion we approve sixteen H.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
Mr. Shannon? Do you wanna?
I only clicked one, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. All voting yes.
Thank you. Moves us to seventeen, administration reports. Do we have any comments or questions on those?
Mr. Mayor, I've got fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen questions?
Yeah.
All right, shoot.
All right. On Mr. Risto's report, you're having internal discussions on ongoing responses to river levels throughout the fall. So where are we at? What are we doing? Where does the public need to worry?
So some of the discussions have been just to, uh, find out what levels we'll be experiencing through the fall, which as you're currently seeing, those levels aren't gonna drop. The secondary, uh, concern we have is not as much as what comes in from the Missouri River, but what we can't get out. So we've had some meetings with the N R D about maybe a permanent pumping solution.
Jim, I, I think people are having issues hearing you.
I'm sorry.
I kinda can't hear you, too.
So our, our other issues are, um, our other discussions have been with the N R D talking about a permanent pumping solution. Um, where the Brown River is at, to see what we can do to get that into the Missouri because of the business district or the industrial district. We have a large issue with water retention there, a lot of groundwater that as we pump, it just keeps coming up. But we're putting it into the Brown River, which the gates are closed, which then you're basically not putting it anywhere, 'cause it can't get into the Missouri. As you go further south, you'll notice that a lot of the drainage ditches off it, uh, along off its border there, that, that water's been standing all summer. Doesn't look like that's gonna mitigate either. Because the water that generally drains into the base lake is not because their gates are closed. So we're trying to find a solution to help us move that water to the Missouri. The long term, the discussions have been is whatever we're pulling out of there, we don't wanna be taking more groundwater that will just come back in. So we gotta make sure we do this right. So that, uh, there's a study that was done in nineteen ninety-nine? Was it nineteen ninety-nine?
Something like that.
Will re-initiate ninety-four?
Ninety-four.
Which kind of addressed the groundwater and then what you're, you're basically pumping to eternity, because all you're doing is taking groundwater and putting it into Missouri, and it's coming back through underneath. So it depends how far out you pump it, but, so we've got kinda two issues is what will we experience with the Missouri? What are our concerns? Where are they at on updates with their levees? And then secondary to that is the, uh, how do we move water out of our systems now back into the Missouri that are just sitting?
Okay, but at this point, with Gavin's Point still sending us forty-eight trillion gallons a day, we're, we're holding our own.
They're gonna continue to put out eighty thousand cubic feet per second, um, through December is what we.
Forty-eight trillion gallons, yeah.
There's a lot of water that'll be continuing to come down, so that water will stay at the level that you see now.
Okay.
Probably well, they're saying into December, but I would imagine based on some rainfall and some snow that they've already had, that that'll probably go into the spring. Our biggest fear is what happens in the spring with whatever goes on north. So.
Yeah.
It's a continual guarded eye. We wanna be prepared, you know, from an emergency standpoint if another event should occur, but we aren't hearing that the Platte River will be an issue, um, contrary to some other discussions. That was an anomaly, but it's, uh, the Missouri, we shouldn't see any breach on our side. But you never say never.
Never say never.
So I asked the question, and somebody finally gave me an answer. I don't know if it's any good or not, but if Gavin's Point dam breaks, Omaha floods to fiftieth street. I always wanted to know.
It's a lot of water.
Or any of the other dam.
All right, now I actually only have one other question for Jim. You testified before Urban Affairs up at the legislature on L R one fifty-five. I just wanna know what the city's involvement, what the study's gonna be, and how invasive that's gonna be for us.
The discussion revolved around, so L R one fifty-five is what impacts bordering states. So cities that are sitting on a bordering state, whether you're Kansas, uh, South Dakota, or Iowa, since we sit bordering Iowa, what are some of the things that affect our community, whether it's tax benefits that retirees for the military, and I think schools, too, are also the benefactors of, uh, public education where they don't tax retirees. It's an attraction for our military retirees to leave our state and park in Iowa. They have different economic development incentives. Uh, so this was more of an educational, what do we see happening within it? Casinos are another issue from gambling on one side of the river or the other, but, so what are all the things that we see as a disadvantage to us that puts us, uh, behind the curve with Iowa? So it was just to share what the greater impacts in our community are. We'll lose a lot of our entertainment dollars to Iowa, uh, largely because of the casinos. Uh, if they're out for dinner and they're at the casino, that's part of our entertainment dollars. I think you guys just recently saw where a sports book, uh, was opened up nationwide. Iowa opened it up, and I think the guy before me testified that like in the first eight weeks, it was, don't quote me, but it was over forty-seven million dollars that had been, wow, booked at Ameristar and, and Horseshoe. Uh, those dollars are coming from a large portion of this state. So the tax benefit to Iowa is significant, but those are dollars that we lose. So it's just, Senator Wayne is just kinda doing the studies. So what, what will they craft as legislation that would, would help us combat that? Not just on, on, uh, gambling, but on taxes or benefits to the military. You had housing developers that try to recruit our people across based on some of the things that they can do, business development. Um, we both have our industrial tracks. Mills County at one point was doing a rail study. Their economic incentives are better than Nebraska's. So it's what do we have to do to stay competitive on bordering states? So his study, I think they were up in Sioux City the week after, so they're looking at what does South Dakota do? What does Kansas do? It's trying to help them craft what maybe future legislation ought to come through this year. I think the Nebraska Advantage Act is up for discussion this year, and those are things that'll go into that bucket, so.
So maybe some potential benefit for us down the road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I will tell you, uh, the United, the mayors at the United Cities, um, gave Jim accolades for his testimony, so. Did a good job. Thanks.
Still work another week. Lucky you.
So do you have more questions, or is that it?
No, I was.
Any more comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a brief one. MAPPA did have a meeting this, uh, past Monday that I did attend. Uh, it was basically of elected officials in Sarpy County. So we had three state senators there. We had a couple mayors. We had, uh, county board. Uh, it was well-attended. Basically, MAPPA was looking at feedback. Uh, certainly, one of the things that, that I discussed was the extension of Highway thirty-four all the way to the interstate and the cutoff, and beginning to plan better for that and get some help from MAPPA on that. Uh, I also, we talked about, uh, the need for affordable housing. We talked about the need for transporting workers to jobs. Uh, they were listening, and all of those elected officials that were there gave some very good feedback. So I think MAPPA is out there, and they're trying to do some regional planning, which we really need to do. We need everybody to be looking together, and I think our involvement in MAPPA is very well worth the time. So MAPPA is on the administrator's report at least twice, so I bring that up just as a report. It's easier than putting an email together, so I do it all now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thanks for attending that, too. I was on my way and got called away on all those driving, so.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I like it.
Let's go.
Please vote. Thank you, everyone.